Welcome to the July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four work session and special session of the Mayor and City Council of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. I have a motion to go into special session. Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a resolution, City of Hagerstown Public Facilities Bond of two thousand and twenty-four, federally taxable for the third parking deck project and the Hagerstown Field House project.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the adoption of the resolution authorizing the City of Hagerstown to issue and sell by solicitation of competitive bids at public sale a series of general obligation bonds as captioned above in order to finance, reimburse, or refinance costs of the projects referred to in the next sentence, including by prepaying a bond anticipation note issued by the city for the third parking deck project in two thousand and twenty-three, all as provided therein. The resolution provides that the original aggregate principal amount of the bonds may not exceed twenty-six million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The portion allocated to the third parking deck project may not exceed ten million, six hundred thousand dollars, and the portion allocated to the Hagerstown Field House project may not exceed fifteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As required by enabling ordinances numbers oh, two-three, oh-five, and oh, two-four, twelve, the resolution enumerates details regarding the bonds and their sale and authorizes the Director of Finance to, one, make modifications to bond details in certain circumstances and provide for communication of such adjustments prior to the sale, and, two, award the bonds or reject all bids on the sale date. The bonds will have an approximately twenty-five-year amortization period. The full faith and credit unlimited taxing power of the city shall be pledged to the payment of debt service on the bonds, although it is expected that an allocable portion of the debt service will be paid in the first instance from the parking fund. The resolution specifies the order of priority in which alternate officials may take certain actions if the position of Mayor, Director of Finance, or the City Clerk is vacant or in the absence, disability, or unavailability of any such official. Appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to take the actions necessary to proceed with the bond sale and to close the issuance and delivery of the bonds.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So moving into our work session, we have first up National Opioid Settlement Notice, and we have Kroger Company, and Scott, nice one, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Bruce and Kathy Poole, the Poole All Group are the attorneys working with the city related to these opioid cases that we're involved in. They are unable to be here this afternoon, and the way the schedules are working out between meetings and their availability, they would not be able, we would not be able to have a discussion with them on this specific item until after the decision would have to be made. That decision would be a recommendation that the City Council vote next week in regular session to opt in to the opioid litigation settlement with the Kroger Company. Kroger's is a grocery store chain with several subsidiaries that also have pharmacies. Kroger's recently has opted to reach a settlement in the multi-district litigation. Opting in will have the effect of increasing the proceeds the city will ultimately receive from this litigation. Again, there's no need to vote now, as this will replace this new business next week, but wanted to make you aware of it, because like you'd be aware of these things before you're asked to vote on it. I'm hopeful that later in August, the council will receive a full update as to the overall litigation that you all were given in an executive session with the Poole's when we can get schedules straight. So no need to make any decisions right now, just for your awareness for the vote next week.
All right, next up is the preliminary agenda review. And this is the agenda for our ninety-ninth voting session, our regular session, ninety-ninth voting session, July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Meeting, call the meeting to order at seven P M. Invocation will be done by Councilmember Schindler, pledge to the flag. And then we'll have announcements, rules of procedure effective December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the City Clerk and should include a copy for the City Clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for August is Tuesday, August sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a work session at four P M. Tuesday, August thirteenth, we have a work session at four P M. Tuesday, August twentieth, there's a work session at four P M. Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, is our regular session at ten, not ten P M, seven P M. Look at Wes's face like, whoa. We have some guests that'll be here, Historic Preservation Awards. There'll be appointments, Board of Traffic and Parking, Historic District Commission. Then we have citizen comments. Citizen comments on the agenda shall be limited to topics listed for consideration on this agenda and limited to five minutes. General citizen comments shall be limited to three minutes. Citizens are welcome to provide comments in person or by sending an email to councilcomments@hagerstownmd.org no later than five P M on Tuesday, July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Include your full name, home street address, and topic for your comments. You may attach a letter to the email or write your comments in the body of the message. The City Clerk will read your name, address, and provide a summary of the comments. The full copy of the comments will be provided for the public viewing as part of the minutes. We have a public hearing, two thousand and twenty-four, package of Land Management Code, L M C amendments. We have our minutes for June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, June eleventh, and June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Consent agenda. We have City Clerk. Granicus. Granicus Meeting Management Software and Migration from Novus. Granicus is Denver, Colorado, forty-five thousand dollars. We have Community Engagement, Open Container Exemption and Application, Permit for Latin Festival, August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Councilmember Perrini, you had some.
Madam Mayor, I had a quick question about this. I know we talked about this last week, but is this event contemplate any kind of onsite cooking?
The Latin Festival onsite cooking?
Yes, it just depends. We don't have their vendors yet, but I would assume so.
So, you know, I think we should be just given the situation from a previous outdoor event that had significant cooking that left quite a mess, that we should be checking into that and making sure that there are appropriate restrictions in place.
Thank you.
Thanks.
For engineering, purchase recycling totes, Red Hat Rig Pacific Company, Erie, Pennsylvania, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred, fifty-three dollars and forty cents. Councilmember Perrini?
Yeah, I'd like to ask for that to be pulled from the consent agenda, please.
Is there two other council members that would?
I don't think you have to have.
All right, thank you. All right. Can you tell me why that happens? Thank you. Physical Year Twenty-Five Sidewalk Accessibility Ramps, Henson and Son, Inc., Hagerstown, Maryland, not to exceed one hundred and forty-five thousand. Physical Year Twenty-Five Payment Preservation Contract, C. William Hetzer, Hagerstown, Maryland, not to exceed one million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. For fire, we have Mercedes Kraken XO Fire Hose Task Force Tips, New Pumper, Whitmere Public Safety Group, Inc., and that's Coatesville, P A, sixty thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-six cents. Task Force Tips Reserve Pumper, Whitmere Public Safety Group, Inc., Coatesville, P A, twenty thousand, six hundred, thirteen dollars and forty-five cents. Human Resources, I know why this now. I know why he's gonna vote no. Just clicked. Human Resources Liability Property Insurance for Physical Year Twenty-Five, Local Government Insurance Trust, Hanover, Maryland, seven hundred, sixty-five thousand, twelve dollars. Information Technology, we have E S R I G I S Annual Software Renewal, E S R I, Inc., Redlands, California, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. For Glessner, we have Glessner Annual Maintenance, Glessner Technologies, Hagerstown, Maryland, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. For Plan and Code Administration, demolition of West North Avenue garages, amen, one forty-eight West North Avenue Adams demolition, Hagerstown, Maryland, seventy-five thousand dollars. For police, we have two, two thousand and twenty-four Chevrolet Tahoe utility vehicles and four, two thousand and twenty-five Ford Police Inseptor Utility Vehicles. Herkich Fleet Services, Inc., Milford, Delaware, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. For public works, City Hall Improvements, Emergency Generator, Fidelity Power Systems, Sparks, Maryland, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred, twenty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Consent agenda still, City Hall Improvements Furnace and Installation of Electrical Services for Emergency Generator, M E C, Inc., Electrical Service, Hagerstown, Maryland, twenty-one thousand dollars. City Hall Improvements Furnish and Installation of Gas Piping for an Emergency Generator, Beaver Mechanical Contractors, Inc., Hagerstown, Maryland, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Signal Controller Upgrades, A Vision Video Sensor Computer Board, Anetzi Kano Light, Glen Burnie, Maryland, forty-three thousand, seven hundred, ninety-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Twenty twenty-five Ford Seven Fifty Gas Dump Truck Plow, Salt Spreader, Keystone Ford, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-six cents. Twenty twenty-four F One Fifty Four-by-Four Super Cab Pickup Truck, Keystone Ford, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Twenty twenty-four Bronco Sport Forward Drive Four-by-Four Big Ben, Keystone Ford, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. John Deere X Seven Five Eight Tractor, Atlantic Tractor, LLC, Hagerstown, Maryland, twenty-five thousand, five hundred, forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Two John Deere Gators, Finch Turf, Inc., Eldersburg, Maryland, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred, fifty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Streetsweeper Stewart Emis Equipment Company, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Twenty twenty-four F Five Fifty Cheyenne Four-by-Four S D Regular Cab Service Body Model H C Three Crane, Keystone Ford, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. For utilities, all utilities, patching contract, Physical Year Twenty-Five and Physical Year Twenty-Six, Henson and Son, Inc., Hagerstown, Maryland, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred, fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. For lights, emergency purchase, rubber good testing and replacement, S F S Tools and Safety, LLC, Harrisonburg, Virginia, fifty-four dollars and seven cents. Water, emergency repair for vehicle two oh-six, Hagerstown Ford, Hagerstown, Maryland, eleven thousand, nine hundred, seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Water, environmental laboratory nutrient analyzer, Thermo Electron, North America, LLC, Madison W I, my brain shut down, fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventeen cents. Water and wastewater, water and wastewater rate model updates, new gen strategies, Annapolis, Maryland, twelve thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. Water and wastewater change order for engineering services. Oh, yeah, you did. I have that circled. I'm sorry.
I just was trying to figure out, is this for work that's already been done, or is this?
He's talking about number five that I just read, water and wastewater.
Yeah, the twelve thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollar fee for the model update. Is this work that's already been done? Is this what we've already participated in?
It'll be a combination. Some of the work is already done, but there's still a little more work on there that has not been done yet. But will we bring in a proposal back the end of this calendar year, December, January time period?
And that's what this is generally for?
Well, there's still a little bit cleanup work that we're doing that is not done yet, but most of this is for the work that has already been completed to get us to where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. My finger was over the circle. Water and wastewater change order. It's all running together now. Water and wastewater change order for engineering services for electronic plan review, E P R support, Buckguard Horn, Baltimore, Maryland, twenty-five thousand dollars. Wastewater windows purchase and installation maintenance, and S C A D A Office, Rockwell Construction, Inc., Mercer'sburg, P A, sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. For unfinished business, we have approval of an ordinance, local conversion district at one thirty-two Bethel Street, American Hall. Approval of an ordinance, landmark overlay at one thirty-two Bethel Street, American Hall. Approval of an ordinance, local conversion district overlay at four oh-one Center Street. Approval of an ordinance, deed of easement with Hagerstown Housing Authority for a portion of the cultural trial. New business, introduction of an ordinance, Physical Year Twenty-Five, water rates. Introduction of an ordinance, twenty-six, sorry. Introduction of it, let me go back. Introduction of it, told you it's all running together. Introduction of an ordinance, Physical Year Twenty-Six, water rates. Introduction of an ordinance, Physical Year Twenty-Six, wastewater rates. Approval of a resolution, setting annual rate per stormwater billing fee, unit for the stormwater utility fee beginning Physical Year Two thousand and twenty-six. Approval of a resolution, National Opioid Settlement Notice for Kroger Company. Approval of a resolution, approval of city Physical Year Two thousand and twenty-five, community development block grant, annual action plan. Approval of a resolution, approving amendment number one to the Joint Superior Service Agreement, J S S A, agreement with the Board of County Commissioners. Approval of American Rescue Plan, A R P A, restaurant-ready grant extensions. Approval of letter of satisfaction for Duvernage Financial Incentive Agreement, approval of Mural selections for Hagerfest Arts and Music Festival, approval of lease holdover extension with Maryland Department of Labor. Approval to participate in the P F A S Research Project with the Interstate Commission on the Potomac River Basin. Approval of proposal for Community Legacy Upper Floor Housing Grant. Approval of Government Relations Agreement with Compass G R Partners.
Madam Mayor, if I could, one thing I failed to mention. On this item K, P F A S Research, is this a mandated? Is this a mandated project or federal project? Or, and I'm gonna get to the second question, which is, does anybody paying us for this?
It is not mandated. We were asked if we would participate because we are the first intake on the Potomac. And no, we're not being reimbursed for it, but we are looking at it as in an investment in that research that we will benefit from should we have problems either on the drinking water or the wastewater side.
Thank you.
What is that, city administrator comments, mayor and council comments, and then we will adjourn. It's all started running together now. All right, we have mural recommendations, and we have Brittany Air's Monday Air Community Engagement Officer, and also the infamous Mr. Rodney Tissue himself.
I notice I show up for the fun stuff.
I'll be joining you.
All right, so we are here before you today to provide recommendations to five muralists that the Public Art and Design Committee selected. You'll see in your packet here, you should see the call that we put out. And I sent an email out to everyone a few weeks ago. We received sixty-one applications from artists from over twenty different states, including an artist from Canada, so that's exciting. So what we're gonna go through here in a minute are the five recommended artists that the committee selected. And then if we get your blessing and your final approval next week at regular session, Roddy and I will move forward with getting agreements for these artists. We have, you wanna talk a little bit about the interview process?
We did interview the top five artists, and what struck me from all that was just, even though they were, in a lot of cases, far from here, Ottawa, Canada, Pasadena, California, they were very interested in coming to Hagerstown. They'd seen the portfolio of work that we already have, and they just wanted to be part of what we've got going on here. So I was very struck by how excited all of them were to come work in Hagerstown for a pretty small amount of money.
So in your packet, we'll just quickly roll through these. The first design is out on Potomac Street. This artist actually doesn't agree to our agreement, so we have a backup artist for this location, which we'll be reaching out to, but it's a similar style as to this. Basically, the committee chose a top ten. So in the case that we had an artist that didn't agree to our terms, that we would have a backup for each location.
This particular artist likes to tell the story of the history of the community that he's working in, and the backup one will do the same.
Yes. Second one, when we interviewed him, he was actually in Madrid, Spain. So he lives in Pasadena, California. This location will be behind University District Parking Deck on U S M H's building in the alleyway. Dr. Ashby actually approached me several months ago asking if there's ever an opportunity if you're for a mural to go on that building, to please reach out to him. So we're making that happen just to brighten up that space there.
That mural is about twenty feet wide and about ten feet high. So the examples of the work that he's done in other places are much larger. Most of these are relatively small murals.
Yes.
This is beautiful.
Yeah, you're right. Is this one gonna be able to take advantage of cleaning up some of these u- utility conduits? And that, when I say cleaning up, painting over them, incorporating them into the design at all?
I guess maybe we could ask him if he could consider that to see what he could do with that. I think it would be. It's that corner.
I hope that would be desirable by the audience.
We'll mention that to him.
Um, the next location is at University Plaza, uh, sixty West Washington. There's obviously one mural already on that building, but this is all the way at the end, uh, adjacent to Wareham Alley. Um, this artist is from Memphis. Um, we really liked that corner location because as you can see in her art, she likes to utilize corners and spaces for almost an interactive aspect. Yes, so we expressed that to her and she actually helps run a mural festival in that, in Memphis, not actual, in Memphis. So we had the opportunity to kind of pick her brain about what that looks like for us moving forward.
Very nice.
Um, artist eight.
Jacksonville.
Yes, this artist lives in Jacksonville. Um, his, we selected as an interactive art piece. So that upper right, uh, photograph of his art, that is actually a Q R code that you scan and you kind of put it together in a puzzle pieces.
On your phone.
On your phone. So we think that's the direction he's going to go and that will be right across from the Uptograph Building. There's a little bump out where there's trash cans. Um, so that will be that space.
Yeah.
And then our final selection, this is actually two people called Drift Mural Company. This, um, they have a company, they're partners in life. Um, they are from Canada. So we've selected them, their space will be in Rochester Alley. Um, so.
On the county building?
Yes, on the county building.
So we're working out an agreement with the county that you'll have to approve, uh, to allow them to, to allow us to put a mural on their building.
That is really, really cool.
And again, do you think that there's an intent to incorporate this grate?
I think so. They've, they've talked about having kind of a long linear mural as you walk down the alley towards the district.
And all of these building locations that are not owned by the city, we're working with, um, to get agreements and move forward, making sure they'll be cleaned beforehand. Uh, most of these artists, uh, we think will probably be in town for about five days. So we have one sponsor, we're looking for more, um, just to cover that cost of housing. Um, but they're all really excited about coming here and being part of this.
It is exciting.
They'll all be working the day of the mural festival.
Yes, all of them will be working on the day of Hagerfest Arts and Music Festival. So Saturday, September twenty first, that's a requirement. Um, and I think if not, most, if not all of them have been part of festivals before, so they know they pretty much need to be done with their work. Some of them even talked about having the, um, citizens be part of it, like, hey, can you paint this little part right here this color? So it should be exciting.
I was about to ask, will they all be here at the same time painting?
Yes, and we are hoping to coordinate a panel discussion as well, either that Thursday or Friday, to incorporate Barbara Ingram, the arts community as a whole.
Nice.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Speaking of Barbara Ingram, when they did the, um, I think it was the Butterfly Project, not the balloon, but the Butterfly Project, um, which were, of course, were all painted by artists, they, they coated those with a special material to protect them from the elements, but also from any potential vandalism as I'm looking at this one picture. Um, is there anything like that contemplated? Do we do that?
It's, it will happen. We're, we'll provide a clear code to each artist.
And it's part of their contract to install it. So if somebody does come along and spray paint it, you basically just wipe it off.
Kind of a tangential thought to this, um, with the new Meritas Park and people looking in that direction, there have been, at least I've heard a lot of comments, it's not related to this directly, but a lot of comments about the, kind of the other side of the building that is the home of the mural of unusual size. Maybe there's a more formal title for it, but that's what I call it. Um, the building owner is, is interested, willing to participate again. Is that something that's in your, in your plan anywhere to kind of, now that, now that we're kind of looking at both sides, you know, that building?
So you're talking about the Baltimore Street side?
That's correct.
Uh, this is my first time hearing about it, so I think we also have a few other buildings where, um, building owners have come to us expressing interest. I mean, it's certainly something we can consider in the future. I think this year we were doing smaller murals just to gauge interest and see if that interest is there.
Right, in the immediate town.
In, yeah, in the immediate, like, one to two block radius. I think moving forward, we can consider, do we wanna use the same amount of money but do a larger project and only do one or two? Um, all things to consider for the future, but nothing's impossible.
You ought to correct me if I'm wrong, provided at least the paint for the base coat and maybe all of the paint.
And did a lot of work to the building to make the wall waterproof.
And I think that, that offer still stands, so, okay.
That's something to definitely consider and keep in mind for the future.
That's good. Hopefully it keeps a, a forward momentum as more people see it and want more public art. That's great.
And I just wanna thank you guys for the publicity for this because we got a lot of heat for the new city logo, even though we advertised it like crazy. But I think this, this time around was much more of effort to get everybody involved. And as you said, over sixty people applied for this, so, um, I'm thankful and, you know, other cities like Annapolis, when you go down there, downtown, their buildings all lit up. I don't know how many times I've met this Rodney, like, we need to talk to my cousin in Hagerstown. So I'm glad it's happening and thank you guys for your work.
Here he is, back at the table.
Back at the table.
She's the one makes it happen.
It's a team effort, for sure. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Sounds good.
Next we have Engine two oh two refurbishment and we have Mr. Jim Bender, our city engineer. Engineer, any council member?
Good afternoon and I asked Kay Osmer to, to join me since Kay knows more about the train hub and how it operates, um, and what goes on at City Park than I do. And she's got a lot of background on, on what the different programs or things that they've done there. But, um, Engine two oh two, as most people know, is the steam locomotive at the train hub. It's a, an old Western Maryland Railroad steam engine from, I think it was built in nineteen twelve and was retired from service and put in City Park in nineteen fifty three, I think. Um, and right now it's, it's on display there, it's got a pavilion, uh, built over the top of it. And the train hub is open, um, with limited hours. It's usually open on the weekends, Fridays and Saturdays, seasonally from April until October. Um, but there are, Kay probably has attendance numbers, which I don't, but there are a certain number of people that do come to, to the train hub wanting to see Engine two oh two. Um, the engine is deteriorating, um, just from being partially out in the elements. Um, and this was recognized many years ago. So back in twenty nineteen, the city applied for a grant from the Maryland Department of Transportation to refurbish the engine, um, basically a cosmetic refurbishment of the engine and repair the pavilion that's over it to provide more protection for it. And we were awarded funds to do that, we were awarded a little over six hundred thousand dollars to do that. Um, so we hired a consultant who, an architect who has connections with railroad restoration subcontractors. They put together plans and specifications, um, to do a project, to do this cosmetic restoration. And then we put the project out to bid, um, in October of last year and put it out to bid for, I believe thirty days was the, the bidding period. And we had some interest, uh, a number of contractors showed up at the pre-bid meeting. Um, so we thought we were gonna get some interest, but then on bid opening day, we received no bids. And so we did a little bit of research and most of the contractors said that the reason they didn't, uh, submit a bid was that they didn't feel they had enough time to adequately evaluate it and, and put together a, a reasonable price. So we stepped back, um, at staff level, looked at it, we talked with, um, our contacts at the Maryland Department of Transportation and we decided to put it back out to bid, um, with some relaxed procurement, um, requirements in the contract. And we put it out for a much longer time, we put it out for almost two months' time, hoping that that would give the contractors enough time to, to bid the project. Uh, we opened bids again this spring, only received one bid, that was from Callis Contractors and it was a little over three point three million dollars. We had originally estimated the cost was gonna be under eight hundred thousand dollars. So the, the single bid we received was basically four times what we had expected or budgeted. Um, so staff has been getting together and trying to figure out what is our next step forward. And I think that's the purpose of being here tonight is to, to get some direction from the council on what we wanna do moving forward and, um, you know, lay out, I guess, a few different options that the staff sees and then present, I guess, the staff's, I won't call it a recommendation, but sort of a consensus of, of how the staff sees this.
Can I ask you a quick question before you get into the options?
Sure.
Um, Callis Contractors, obviously local quality contractor, they build buildings. Um, so it seems to me like we're kind of conflating two very disparate part, very different projects, fixing the pavilion part and fixing the engine. Um, is there a reason why you wanted to keep that together? And secondly, what was the breakdown of the three point three two five billion dollars between the actual construction work and the engine restoration?
Right, so the construction work for the pavilion itself was, and I don't have the exact numbers with me, I apologize, it was approximately one point two million, one point three million, which to us seems excessive, given that it's basically just a, a pole barn type of structure that's open on the sides. Uh, the square, the per square foot price to do that type of construction was probably three or four times what we expected it was going to be. Uh, and then the remainder was the restoration work, which also was a, a much high, yeah.
Two point one million.
Um, which was a much higher number than we were expecting. Our, you know, our consultants had been talking with restoration contractors and they sort of had a feel for what range they thought these bids were gonna come in at. And it's, that was not even close to what we saw with this one bid.
One other quick, kind of your personal reaction, you only got one bid, um, so there's not much to compare it to, which is usually how you can determine if somebody is not sure about the scope and add it as zero, just being facetious there. Um, did you get that feeling that, that it just wasn't like in their wheelhouse and maybe there was, or did they have like a really well broken down bid with, here's how much it's gonna cost for every little item?
We, the bid was set up so there were individual items for a lot of the different elements of the construction. I would say that the first time that we put it out to bid, which was, um, last fall, we may not have been clear enough at that time that we were just looking for a cosmetic restoration. I think that there were some contractors that thought we wanted to put this, we wanted to do a full restoration and put this steam engine back in operation, which was never our intent. So the second time that we bid it, both at the pre-bid meeting and in an addendum that was issued with, you know, before the bids were open, we tried to make it clear that we are just talking about a cosmetic project here, we're not trying to bring two oh two back into service. And so we thought that we had been as clear as we could be what we were looking for. So that is another reason that this, this bid price really surprised us.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, staff discussed this, we, we came up with four basic options to, to move forward on this. Um, option one would be to seek additional funds, enough funds to actually pay Callis to do, to do this project. Um, it's, um, we might be able to get some additional grant funding from the state, but we're not going to get enough grant funding to, to bridge that gap, you know, that couple million dollar gap. Um, so we would have to find local funds more than likely to try to, to bridge that gap and that would have to be, I think the council would have to identify this project as a priority because we would, would likely have to pull money from other, other projects in order to cover this. So that would be one option. Um, a second option would be go back and, um, again, for a second time, sort of refine and simplify the design of what we're trying to do and not even do as much of a cosmetic restoration as we, as we bid out. Basically just pull some of the, like the boiler jacket panels on the steam engine, just pull them off, clean them, repaint them, put them back on. Maybe not looking at doing, um, all the little trim pieces that were in the bid and, you know, cosmetically they do make two oh two, but it, that obviously adds cost to it. So we could look at, um, simplify, doing a simplify project, um, putting it back out to bid and see what results we get from that. The third option would be to go back and revisit the offer that we had several years ago from the Western Maryland, Western Maryland Scenic Railway. And basically, they would like to acquire Engine two oh two, take it up to their facilities at Frostburg or Cumberland, do a full restoration and actually put that engine into service on their tracks as part of the, the Western Maryland Scenic Railway. Um, as part of that deal, which they made a couple of years ago, they had offered to, in exchange, give the city a more modern diesel locomotive that we could put on display and place a two oh two. Um, if we're, you know, if that's the direction that the council would like to explore, I think, Scott, we would wanna get the Western Maryland folks down here again, um, to make a presentation or, or to actually make an offer and just make sure that everybody is still on the same page with what was discussed before. Fourth option, um, really is to do very little. It's try to repair the roof on the pavilion and don't touch two oh two. Um, it would buy us a little bit of time, but the engine is gonna continue to deteriorate, it's not gonna be restored. It's gonna be continuing, continuing maintenance costs to the city, um, over the years. So staff went back and forth on this and I think, I'd say that the consensus that we reached is reconsidering Western Maryland Scenic Railway's offer is, is where we would land. And I guess there are a couple of reasons for that. To do any sort of a restoration to two oh two is gonna, is going to cost money, obviously, and it could be significant money if Callis's bid is an indication. Um, two oh two is only open to the public for a small percentage of the days out of the year and I think the city would have to look at that and try and decide, is it worth it? Is it worth it to expend a lot of money for an amenity that is not available to the public that often? Um, Western Maryland Scenic Railway wants to actually put this engine back in operation and I think that the consensus of staff is that really is the highest and best use for two oh two. If it could be put back in operation, people could actually ride on the train that's being pulled by that locomotive, even if it's not in Hagerstown, but somewhere proximity to Hagerstown, that to us seems like that may be the best solution. Um, if, if that was selected, then, and two oh two was removed from the train hub, then obviously we've got a space to fill there with something. And I think that would be an opportunity, um, to look at doing something different in that space. Um, I think, look, Kay, maybe chime in here, there's been talk over the years that maybe there's not enough of an interactive experience at the train hub. And so we could look at, um, trying to address that, making use of the space that, that two oh two's removal would provide.
So just give a little bit of background with that. So currently we have the locomotive and one caboose that is actually open to the public to climb aboard. And then we have, I believe, five other cabooses on site that are currently closed to the public. Um, so if we were to shift directions and look at new opportunities there, um, if we were to decide to show and display fewer rail cars, we have a lot of land to reallocate for a different purpose there and we can be very creative with those options.
How many visitors, um, since they, it's limited?
How many visitors, since they, it's limited hours, how many visitors usually come to visit?
So yearly, with some of our larger events like Fall Fest, and this year we had Touch a Truck there, which was very successful, we can bring in between 3,000 to 4,000 pretty regularly. But again, that is pretty much on either large scale event days, two days a week, April through October, school tours and group tours during the week.
And one other question, if we went with option three, I can't remember, I remember the conversation, but would there be kind of tribute to where it came from? And, and did they, did they talk about that then and kind of giving us some credit?
Yeah, I, I actually, I think, I think Rodney actually was, was here making that presentation when, and I, and I don't, I'm not sure that I was actually at the meeting where they appeared. But I think that in our discussions at staff level, that would be, we recommend that that is a requirement of whatever deal is worked out. That there is recognition. I think Scott or someone had mentioned that if you drive up to Frostburg and you can prove you're a Hagerstown resident, you get a free ride on the train, something like that. I mean, I think there are, there are things that we could, I guess, build into this agreement that would get us some, some of that recognition.
I mean, for me personally, I think that the third option to revisit it and seems, and, and do something else with the space and the interactive, I, I really like that. For me, I like that option the best, so.
Yeah.
Kristen, I remember.
So.
I remember that conversation sitting right there.
I mean, I, I think that I was fine with the process the first time of providing it to Frostburg to be put back in use. For me, I think I would suggest something that's probably a little taboo among the, the, you know, hub, train enthusiasts in the community. When you talk about reimagining the space, you know, and I can remember probably, I don't know, five years ago now, going through a very similar process of restoration of trolley car 150 in Myersville. We put it in the new library inside, and it probably cost us about $160,000 to restore that. And there was some confusion in the industry because number one, folks in this industry, the, the railcar, the trolley car industry are few and far between to begin with. And the repeated message that I got as we entered that was that the time, they just didn't have enough time because there aren't enough people, because it's a specialized thing, and to commit to, to a project of that magnitude and, you know, are you looking at spending $200,000 to, to make it look nice? Or are you spending $400,000, you know, so it could be put back on, you know, a rail tomorrow? And so, you know, we had to cobble together a number of folks that had expertise in woodworking and, you know, canvas wrapping and painting and things like that to make it happen. We couldn't find one entity that wanted to do that. We had to find individuals with unique skillsets that specialized in putting a new canvas roof on the trolley and, you know, restoring the woodwork and the seats that, you know, flip both directions and, and those types of things. And it ended up being a good product, you know, because it was representative of that period and not, you know, a full restoration. And I say that because I think I've said here a number of times, you know, there are only four of our HNF trolley cars left. And we are fortunate enough in this community, in the city, to have one that is sitting and, and, and frankly speaking, wasting away on Burhans Boulevard. And I would love for folks to get their minds and their interests together. And, you know, maybe instead of giving this money back, when you talk about reimagining that space, moving that car over there, which has, you know, real roots in Hagerstown history and, 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 you know, spending that money to revitalize that, you know, to add to that draw, you know, for, for that particular space.
So do you think that that's as simple as like a call for artists, like we had?
No, I think that we need to coordinate with the folks that currently own the Hagerstown trolley car, you know, that have wanted to do something with it for decades and, and have not. And say, hey, you know, we've got funding, we've got space, we've got interest, you know what I mean? And we've got the ability to incorporate it into this idea and see before we sort of, you know, hand that funding off and then decide, you know, we're not going to do something as, as, you know, visibly enticing in that area, to see if there's a way to get a win on both accords. Putting 202 back in service and then getting the Hagerstown trolley in that space, you know. And, and the restoration of that is way cheaper than, you know, a, a full locomotive engine. So that'd be my, that'd be my two cents. And I think that there are folks, you know, that would be willing to have that conversation rather than continue to see the car sit in, in decline than it does. Because there was a time when there were 30 to 40 on the system between here and Thurmont and Frederick that don't exist anymore. Like I said, there, there's four left. Three of the four are in, you know, some form of public ownership, so.
No, I'm saying as we reimagine the space, I just think that that's-
He's thinking the next step.
Because I don't know what-
I'm like, are we skipping stuff?
Because I don't know what we're going to do with the money.
Right, so in lieu of getting another locomotive, right, that, I would assume there'd be some monetary compensation for 202 if, if we set in lieu of receiving a diesel, a newer diesel style.
No, we have the grant funding, right?
Well, we have the grant funding to restore 202. I think if we're, if we're switching gears to a different restoration or something, then we would have to go back to them and see, is this-
That's what I'm saying, I think that's a conversation we need to have to see if there's interest among the parties to do that. Because I think it is equally historically important, you know, in, in the effort of-
And I, I wouldn't think that those two things would be mutually exclusive. I don't know that the powers that be would maybe want to choose one or the other. So, and I don't know, you know, what the Western Maryland Scenic Railway's anticipation is. I think we'd have to figure that out. But let me say, as a train enthusiast, that, yeah, the money is obviously an issue, but it's kind of tugs at the heartstrings. And I'm going to give an example, example that Kay made happen. A couple of weeks ago, the city dedicated a historic transportation marker in the train hub in front of the engine, and I'm going to read it. "Steam Engine 202, the last surviving K2 Pacific-type 462 locomotive." That's four wheels, six wheels, two wheels, for those that aren't, don't know.
Something not interesting.
"The locomotive steam engine operated by the Western Maryland Railway here in Hagerstown, built in 1912 and retired in 1953." And by the way, that marker was courtesy of the William C. Palmeroy Foundation. And so that engine is not just an engine that, you know, happened to be here in Hagerstown. It was a fundamental part of the Hagerstown Railway. One of the speakers that I talked to after that dedication was commenting about back in the day that when we had a full roundhouse here, that, you know, a lot of the, the Hagerstown workers took such pride in their work that every time an engine went out of the roundhouse, it was washed. And everybody on the line could tell which engines were from Hagerstown, because they were the clean ones. And so I, you know, it tugs at the heartstrings. But the other side of that coin is the fact that, and I noticed this when we were there for the marker dedication, it is in real disrepair and it's almost like falling exponentially, right? It's, the worse it gets, the faster it gets bad. So I'm going to concur with the comments that have been made that, you know, even though it's got a really special place in Hagerstown, to see it deteriorate and ultimately fall apart and have to be dismantled anyhow, I don't think anybody wants to see that. I don't know what it's going to take, and just, just, just for clarification, the Western Maryland Scenic Railway runs from Cumberland to Frostburg. And it's a visit, you know, it's a tourism, and they, they do the turn on the turntable and up in Frostburg and turn around and come back. And it's very popular. And to see that engine, that huge engine in operation again, I think with the right credit to Hagerstown would be a special thing. I do think, I do think you have to really kind of make sure that they're not expecting the, the funds to follow the train, because I bet you they are.
Not from us.
Well, from the MDOT.
No.
Grant.
No, they don't, no, they have their own.
They have their own?
Yep.
Okay, well, that, that's good to know.
Just wanted to kind of pose a question for you. So the train has been in the park for about 70 years. And the question is ultimately, do we want to continue to steward and be responsible for the maintenance and care of this for another 70? Or do we want it to see a second life on the railroad? That's the question.
What would the train enthusiasts say?
Do we accept responsibility for another 70 years and find the money to care for it?
I love trains so much.
Or do we find a second life?
I mean, I think that's what I found when, you know, because when we were restoring the trolley, one of the things I found is I would go to Boonsborough or Hagerstown or Thurmont, I would talk to the folks that had bits and pieces, right? People had signs and, 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 you know, footholds and lanterns and, you know, things that, that were important to the restoration of the item. And as much as, as folks were enthusiastic that we were restoring this item, they're like, yeah, but we'd really like to keep this lantern here, you know, at this place. And so I think it speaks to that question, yeah, we could sit it, you know, where it sits, you know, for time. But if everybody is truly interested, sort of in the best interest of full restoration of these types of historical things, at some point you have to let go a little and say, okay, what's in the best interest of, of the continuance of this historical item? You know, is it, is it, is it on a shelf?
Yes.
You know, in this display case?
Right.
Or is it, you know, on the train car itself in use? And that, you know, that, that was a little bit of a hard thing to get over as I had to go out and sort of recreate the seats and recreate and, you know, and find somebody who might be selling a lantern that was, you know, on the HNF. It was very odd that folks were like, yeah, but, you know, this lantern's in our possession and it's got to stay here forever. And it's like, but we really like what you're doing.
We can find ways to honor and commemorate the history of the train in the park, even if it does leave. We can still interpret, we have photographs and artifacts and stories to document that it didn't spend that time in the park if it were to leave.
I think these are the same type of arguments we have often, whether it's a house or whether it's a historical thing and those types of things. And some of us love trains, some of us love horses, some of us like old houses. But at the same time, what is the best and the most cost-effective thing for government, right? And so as much as I, I, I love the train hub, I also love the roundhouse. Love where that train area is. And I mean, I don't know what you guys think, but-
And I don't know the statistics of how many people use the historic railroad, but I would assume it's exponentially more than, you know, the 4,000 people or so a year that get to enjoy it now. It's sort of like what I, I tell my son, you know, you give him like an action figure, right? And you can collect it, keep it in the packaging and sit it on a shelf and look at it. Or you let, you can actually play with it and let, let it be used for its intended purpose, right?
Other people use it and experience it.
But those things appreciate value, whereas a train is not appreciating.
It's falling apart.
I would just encourage everybody to consider Councilman Alshire's proposal, not as the next step, but as part of this whole decision.
Yep.
And especially given that if the funds don't have to follow the train?
Yep.
The engines, then repurposing them. And I would hope that the current owner would be interested in donating the trolley. Again, they should get a lot of credit because they have it. But at the same time, it's in the same boat, it's in the same situation. It's deteriorating. And so I would like to see all of that as kind of one package.
What, what I can, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to ask that council member's recommendation come off all the way clear for staff.
Yeah, I'll, I'll contact Mayor Flanagan in the morning and tell him, see if we can get him down here in August with, I think he brought two other gentlemen with him. And just represent what they had before. They were, he was thrilled to have the conversation a couple of weeks ago when we all talked about it. So I'm sure they'll be more than willing to come down and talk. And then Jim, maybe reach out to the Roundhouse Museum folks and see what we can do on that front.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll also reach out to the state and just see-
Right.
Can we keep that money but use it for a different purpose? Let's see what their thoughts are.
Was it like specifically for this engine?
Well, it was, I think the, the grant application was, was fairly specific and played up, this is an historic thing that we need to preserve, and that's probably why we got the grant. So I think that we may have to go back and, we may have to reapply. But I, I have a call scheduled with them next week, so I should get some, some feel from the state on what we can do.
All right, you guys go with that, with Councilman Alshire's?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Kay.
Thank you.
Request for extension, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Restaurant Ready Grants Program. Chris Sterling, Economic Development Specialist.
Afternoon or evening. So, excuse me, I'm here on behalf of the ARPA Restaurant, sorry, ARPA Restaurant Ready Grant Review Committee to request a-
Say it again.
To request a 60-day extension for our current grant recipients or applicants from the original 6/30/24 deadline. Unfortunately, there have been delays associated with an outside review agency not part of the city's purview that have affected each of these applications as well as other projects within the county as a whole, which made it difficult to reach the established deadline for the program. We believe the 60-day deadline extension would allow for each of these to open up.
Yes.
There you go. Thank you, Chris. Physically, 2025 CDBG Annual Action Plan. I felt like Chris for a second almost got tongue-tied, so I get to make fun of him. Jill Thompson, our Director, MRD Joe, Community Development Manager. Wait a minute.
Hi.
Hi. Hold on a second, swapped out and tricked me. Hi.
We're really going to miss you today. So we're here to present our FY25 CDBG Proposed Annual Action Plan. Just give you some quick overview of the program itself. The city is an entitlement community for the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG, which is a program of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. That's the last acronym I'm going to give you. We're required to submit an annual action plan HUD, and this acts as our guidebook for the funding that we're expected, expecting to receive for the upcoming year. This plan outlines the projects that we intend to undertake and the funding that we've allocated to each project. From time to time, these activities and allocations may need to change, and these can be accomplished through routine amendment process when necessary. We've been notified by HUD that our grant entitlement amount for FY25 will be $831,982. And we're estimating that our program income will be $165,000 for a total of $996,982. We do require, or we're required to have mayor and city council approval of the annual action plan in order to request and receive this annual entitlement. Generally, we're required to submit the approved annual action plan by July 16th, but due to delay in notification from HUD what our actual entitlement would be, we've gotten a bit of a buffer, so August 16th is our drop dead date. Public input was a part of the process to create the annual action plan. Our first public hearing took place- Our first public hearing took place on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and this also opened up the public service grant application period. We received applications through January fifth of twenty twenty-four, and these were reviewed in February of twenty twenty-four by our Citizen Advisory Committee. We had a second public hearing that took place on May ninth, twenty twenty-four. We didn't have any attendees at that one. Our annual action plan was on display for a thirty day public comment period from April twen- April twenty-ninth to May twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-four. That was based on our original conservative estimate of what the entitlement was going to be. And once we found out from HUD what it was actually going to be, we actually got quite a bit more than we expected, so we needed to go back to the drawing board. So we had a second public comment period for the revised draft from June tenth to July tenth of twenty twenty-four, and no comments were received during either of these periods.
And just some other notes, the annual action plan is created to be consistent with HUD and CDBG national objectives as well as the city's five-year consolidated plan. The plan supports multiple neighborhood-based programs for income-qualified applicants through homeowner repair grants and loans and homeowner down payment assistance programs. The plan also supports neighborhood revitalization through public facility and engineering projects such as sidewalk repair and upgrades, repaving projects, and park and playground creation and rehabilitation. These programs are administered by DCED staff. The plan also provides funding to nonprofit community partners through subrecipient agreements. These organizations provide services to city residents and special needs groups, such as our homeless population, senior citizens, and area youth. The summary of activities and funding amounts have been included in your packet. These are similar to the activities in last year's plan. And staff recommendation is for the annual action plans to be adopted as it was presented during the public comment period. No comments were received during that time, so no changes have been made to the draft. We've included the draft motion and resolution in your packets for the vote expected at regular session on the twenty-third. Approval of the plan will allow us to submit our formal application to HUD to release the entitlement funding. We're happy to answer any questions.
Kristen. These twenty, yeah, these twenty items, are these submitted to HUD? When are these submitted to HUD and when do they get their approval on a line-by-line basis?
Well, we, we submit them as a, a part of a total package that we, yeah. Essentially is to be approved by mayor and council. And then, once it's submitted to them, then they just review and, and because as long as it meets all the eligibility requirements for each project, they'll generally approve it, and then we move forward.
So lately, we've been receiving a lot of activity and action on our substance use and the troubles that we're having in our city, complaints and activity. But I don't see anything in here that addresses that at all. So I'm, is there?
Generally, we would, we would look to one of our nonprofit partners to do that or to address some of those needs through the public service grant program. As far as the, as far as our department itself taking on any specific role in addressing that issue, not so much of a CDBG activity.
But homelessness and Girls Inc. is?
As administered by the nonprofit partners.
Right.
So essentially, that means no one has applied for the CDBG grant for that specific.
Correct.
Program.
But they applied for specifically to administer for homelessness.
Yeah, like, well, we received from Reach. In different years, Goodwill has addressed, has provided, like, different homelessness services. And then, of course, like, in children and need, Girls Inc., they've been involved in, in, in different years too.
I guess all these years that we've been struggling with this and has been going on and is getting significantly worse, I'm surprised that, you know, a nonprofit hadn't reached out to, you know, apply for the CDBG. But I see that the city of Hagerstown, we've applied for code administration and the general program administration to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars or so. Is that right?
Actually, the general program admin is a little bit higher this year because our consolidated, our five-year consolidated plan will be due in the upcoming fiscal year for FY twenty-six. So that includes the cost of a consultant.
Just one thing to add on that. So for the general administration of CDBG, there is no, I'm sorry. No worries. So for the CDBG program administration, there's no real application process. It's separate from Public Services Act. So if you go a few pages back, the actual groups who apply to CDBG for funding under Public Services is on this list here, right, right there, here. Public Program Administration is just one of those allowed expenses under the umbrella of CDBG to have staff and expenses to oversee and administer this program. And that's what it is, and it's a separate path. Then the code administration position, several years ago, when that position was added, it was only added as an additional full-time position if partial funding, because it was a part-time position. If partial funding could be from CDBG. So that thirty to thirty-five thousand is only maybe half of your base salaries.
Okay.
Or base salaries plus benefits, excuse me.
Well, and, and within CDBG, we're also required to meet certain standards for different categories. There are activities that are dedicated to housing, there are activities dedicated to public service grants. Of course, we have administration. As Michelle said, it is, that, that, that number is also subject to a cap.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions? Good? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Review Committee Recommendation of a Proposed Proposal for Community Legacy Upper Floor Housing Grant. And Jill Thompson, our Director of Economic Development, and Mardi Jo, Community Development Manager. There's Jill, isn't there?
Hi. So we're here to, or, excuse me, present a recommendation of approval for an application for the State Community Legacy Upper Floor Market Rate Housing Grant. This was created a couple of years ago because a major emphasis of Hagerstown's Sustainable Community Plan is supporting housing diversity, improving the quality of downtown housing stock, and increasing market rate housing. Creating up quality upper floor housing that is attractive to students, young professionals, and empty nesters is critical to changing the market conditions of downtown Hagerstown. In recent years, the city and state have worked together to provide incentives to support expansion of educational and cultural facilities downtown. We've partnered with developers to create student housing units to support the university system of Maryland at Hagerstown, as well as providing other incentives that have created quality upper floor housing to serve students and young professionals working downtown. These projects are a great start, but additional work is needed to shift the balance to a more equal mix of incomes in the downtown housing market. The goal of the Upper Floor Housing Grant is to provide matching funds to developers to adapt vacant and underutilized upper floors in the buildings in the downtown Hagerstown urban core. The city's been awarded two hundred thousand dollars in Maryland Community Legacy funding to be applied to the expenses to create the units in the Upper Floor Housing Grant Program. Earlier this year, our department issued an RFP for bids for this program, and this had a soft deadline of January nineteenth, but the RFP does remain open to eligible applications until all funding is committed. We've received a bid from Cosner Business Services for their project at thirty-four West Franklin Street, which transformed a vacant office property into five market rate apartments and two commercial office spaces along the cultural trail. Our RFP Review Committee evaluated this project and found that it met eligibility in both scope and investment. And this renovation is anticipated to assist with the revitalization, revitalization of the Franklin Street area. The committee is therefore recommending this project for approval for a one hundred thousand dollar grant per their application request.
We're also recommending that the eligibility period be thirty days prior to the date of application because we did leave that RFP open. So thirty days prior to January nineteenth for eligible expenses for this applicant. And we have a draft motion in the packet, and if you're supportive of this, it would be approved on next Tuesday at the July twenty-third regular session.
So I have a question. So this is for a specific project. I have two questions. First one has to do with your description of affordable housing. Is there anything in the submission or application that identifies or gives the applicant criteria for dealing, you know, for supporting affordable housing? And the part B of that question is, what are they charging for these units?
I believe the RFP allowed for market rate housing proposals to come forward. Someone could propose affordable housing, but market rate housing was acceptable as a proposal response to the RFP.
Right there, right there. You got it on the left-hand side. Peter, where are you at? I'm sorry, Councilman Freeman.
So this would be considered more-
This is considered market rate.
It's toward the back of the packet, but here are the.
So three bedroom, two bath is being rented for nineteen seventy-five a month.
That's our understanding, yes.
So ironically, I just had a conversation with someone last night. Young, I guess you would refer to upwardly mobile, whatever that term is, person loves living in downtown Hagerstown. Describing to me the struggles that a person with college debt coming out of school, you know, trying to find, trying to work their way out, has with rent in a decent space. And I, I wouldn't characterize this as affordable housing at all. I mean, I'm sure it's very nice. I think there's a ribbon cutting coming up, and we're gonna go see it. But I'm also wondering if not necessarily for now, for going forward, how we can find a better sweet spot, if you will, of truly affordable housing for those folks that we're trying to attract to Hagerstown. People that can, as opposed to the opposite brain drain that tends to happen with young people. So while I applaud the efforts of this group to take a building and rehabilitate it and make nice space, good space, we can't talk about this program being for affordable housing when we're doing this.
Did you say it was just for affordable housing? Did I hear you say that market rate was also?
I believe the RFP allowed for market rate housing proposals. And so this is eligible.
I'm just referring to the opening comments about where the money came from and, you know, why we got it, what we're, what, what the anticipation is, so.
I just wanted to clear it up.
I'm not, I'm not against this posing this. I'm just, I'm just looking at this and looking, trying to look forward to future housing for, for young people that we want to either stay or come to Hagerstown and bring their capabilities and to.
Absolutely agree, and I also believe that we have to have, I actually toured, and I spoke to the person who's renting on the third floor, in the three bedroom, I mean, in the three bedroom. And I just think that it's important that we have those types of folks that are downtown as well, that are willing to pay market rate, that appreciate living downtown, that there is, because that helps, that helps with the tax base, that helps with, you know, putting other folks downtown. I'm all about, I think we need affordable housing, but I also believe that for a very long time, the city has been, you know, struggling to get market rate folks in areas. And for this particular company and family to put more than a million dollars into the Franklin and, and bring it to where it is right now. I just didn't want the community or anyone else to misunderstand that they use money for affordable housing and is now charging nineteen fifty. So I just wanted to clear that up, that they were, it's market rate.
Yeah, I think that, I think that when I read through this and I hear the conversation, maybe I'm a little confused. Because I don't read in the packet the indication that this program was for any form of specific housing. When I read market rate, what that says to me is we're going to work with a private development entity that wants to come in and take on the difficulties that often occur with the buildings we recognize in our urban core that are, you know, older and have more issues, you know, in that rehabilitation process. And then convert those into market rate use. And so I think maybe in addition to being a little confused, I'm also a little torn because, and, and I don't know how to separate the two in my mind, because I think it would be difficult for us to look at an applicant and say, hey, Mr. or Mrs. applicant, we would like you to do these things to this property to bring it into compliance for marketability of the property for residential use. But at the same time, that we want you to do all of those things, we want you to make it as affordable as possible. And I don't know that I'm able, I don't know that I can marry the two because, right, I mean, so I'm looking at one and a half million dollars, and I know the last, you know, the numbers associated with the last ten projects, and I'll just take the, I guess it's called the Patterson one, across the street, right? That was sort of like, in my mind, that was sort of like one of the first that happened. And I remember, you know, having the conversations with Mr. Bowen and, you know, and the complexities associated with taking that building and sort of, you know, turning it into what the city envisioned these buildings start to become and turned into. And we can't say that, you know, we want you to check off these ten or fifteen boxes and then, you know, make it as least costly as possible to then run out because, you know, even if it's a hundred thousand dollars and, you know, and, and the applicant's pretty candid in this documentation of the difficulties that they, in, you know, I don't say incurred in that process, but they're pretty clear, hey, you know, here's the delays and here are the things that we have to work around, and, you know, here are some unforeseen items. And, you know, here's where we're at at this point. And a lot of those are sort of directed in their comments toward the city saying, we need you to do this, and we need you to do this, and these other eight things. You know what I mean? And at the same time, I don't know that we can come in on the back end then and say, yeah, but we were really hoping, you know, you'd rent them for a thousand bucks a month. I, I don't, I don't know how you can reconcile those two points of discussion.
I don't think, I don't think you can.
So then, then we should be honest.
That wasn't my comment.
Okay, well, now I get that, yeah, because I feel like we should be honest with ourselves and with the public to say, hey, you know, if this is the expectation, then this is the outcome. And we have to just accept the reality that that's what's going to occur, you know, building after building as, you know, we are party to that process that we want to happen. That, that's, that's the, the, I don't want to say the fallout, but.
These comments together because they, they're accurate. This specific one though was, so it was different than we applied to the state for student housing and there was very specific thing, right? The working were there. This was strictly upper floor. And when we applied to the state to administer this grant to give it out, we did not state affordable housing or market housing because we wanted to be flexible.
Correct.
So in this instance, in giving, in awarding these grants out and doing our bid, we didn't say, hey, you can only apply for this grant money if it's affordable housing or income restricted. But if we were to apply for other programs and other grants to run another incentive program, we could certainly look at doing that and possibly one of the things you, I, I'm just, if, if in the grant, we didn't say it's only going to be affordable housing and income restricted. And then when we put the bids out and we said, hey, developers, here's, here's all the scope and things that we need you to do and comply and we did not specify affordable versus market rate, I don't, we can't then come back and grant the money out and that-
But I don't know that it matters that we specify that or not at this point because I gotta be honest, I feel like the ball is already rolling down that hill and we are, you know, we are in no position to stop it, so to speak. In other words, you know, these buildings are sort of falling one after another into this realm of acquisition, rehabilitation, and then, you know, rental at a rate that, that we haven't seen for a very, very long time. And so, you know, to, to, I don't know what that terminology is going to mean right now versus a year from now in terms of what's affordable because, you know what I mean? In my mind, eighteen months ago, you know, twelve hundred dollars might have been, you know, in that, that, that median area. And three years ago, it might have been nine hundred dollars, but now I feel like that number has just started to jump off the page at a rate that, you know, no matter whether we're a party to this process or not, that ball is rolling through downtown and, and, you know, I, I don't know how you, you know, implement things to curtail a number that is constantly moving up.
And I feel very confident that the RFP did not put any requirements on applicants to demonstrate affordable housing.
And I also want to, you know, there's, speaking with Cosner and also another contractor and person that's investing, they're doing some work that they didn't even sign up, you know, to do, which may be expanding, you know, the piping and things like that. And I don't want them to misunderstand this conversation and think that we're not appreciative of them doing it the right way, right? Like, and them doing it to a way that the folks that are moving into their spaces and places are very proud to live there and pay that amount. Because we do have some that are very dedicated to bringing, you know, our downtown and, and some market rate and getting great people. I mean, I've met some folks that work for Homeland Security, that work for the FBI, that are moving into apartments in this area that are market rate, that are being done appropriately, correctly, and that are working all the way through with code and economic development and are very proud to put this investment into their properties. And I didn't want that to be misunderstood, that we are not thankful for that because it's, it's just as necessary as affordable housing is.
I think that, again, going back to that term when we're talking about it at this table, like, I think back to just maybe three months ago, when I, you know, when I saw the listings for, and I apologize, I don't know the, the residential development on the west side of town.
Patrick Woods.
Yeah, where, you know, it's like thirteen hundred square foot houses are, are being listed in, in like the near three hundred thousand dollar range. And it wasn't, it wasn't two years ago when we were deliberating, you know, as a body of, you know, what that development was going to look like and, you know, the interest of, of, you know, whether it was going to be, you know, affordable sale units, et cetera. And so it was just, I just feel like that part of the conversation has, has grown a bit larger than, than, than we're able to, to corral at this table.
Back to what you said about the grants available for affordable housing, that we can apply to those?
We would have, we would have to, if that is the direction, right, we have, and, and that is something that this body wants us to do, then yes, we would have to start researching and going in that direction or the next time that we apply. Or I know CDBG and HUD, specifically HUD, is looking to draw out a new program. So there's all things coming from the horizon.
And it's not just HUD, UCD, all the other opportunities of wealth before.
Yeah, but I thought, as Thompson said, that this grant didn't have those strings attached, so it's kind of up to-
This one does not. This one did not.
This one does not.
Where this money came from.
It came from the Community Legacy Program, which-
Which didn't have any requirement for market rate versus affordable or anything, right?
Based on how we applied for it.
Right. So if you do that, 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 that gives the city the flexibility to direct one way or another, right?
But we wrote, we wrote the RFP to be simply upper floor housing.
Right.
And we did not ask for-
I understand for-
For those qualifications.
You're talking, and that's the outflow of the money. I'm talking about the inflow from the source. There were no strings attached versus, for a particular type of-
Exactly.
Okay.
Right.
And that gives the city the flexibility to say, if you want, if you wanted to go forward, we'd like to support market rate housing with this grant. We'd like to support affordable housing with this grant.
With something else, right.
Which, so I would encourage maintaining that flexibility.
Absolutely. I, I am in agreement with that. I, I would recommend approval of this as a market rate product and for us to continue to explore other grant programs that might meet those objectives. I think the Choice Neighborhoods program is something that is going to touch on mixed income neighborhoods and have elements of affordable housing. And we did a recent update on that. We hope to come back in August with a more detailed update on the progression of the Choice Neighborhoods Planning Grant and what the recommendations of the consultant will be toward creating mixed income neighborhoods that lift everyone up.
I would be interested in that.
Yes, that's coming very soon.
You have the market, I sent the market analysis to you all Saturday.
Yeah, I just think that in maintaining that flexibility, that, you know what I mean? That when, when we write those, that scope or that, you know what I mean, that it isn't, but we want you to do these fifteen things, you know what I mean? To, 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 to make them of, of some element that, you know, that the numbers aren't going to, you know, add up for the private investor.
Yeah.
I guess that's the, the part that I find confusing.
And when, um-
And we did all, we did all those steps. When we, this administration, of course, approved us to apply and submit for that grant because that, this upper floor housing component being a portion in how much we were going to apply for. And then Jill's group, I don't want to take the words out of Jill's mouth, but Jill's group did come back then and say, okay, here's our program, here's how we're going to rule it out. And, and we got blessing at the mayor and council level before we put those RFPs out to make sure that we were going to program in a manner in which this body wanted this specific grant to be utilized.
Great. She said what I was gonna say. Which is, like, I think it was back in November that we brought the actual RFP to you to see if you had any changes to the RFP before we issued it. And, and next time we get, we, every year, we get Community Legacy and Strategic Demolition funding from the state of Maryland. And as we come to you with concepts as to what we should apply for, and then when we are noticed that we've been awarded that funding, we come back to you with the mechanism as to how to push that money out into the community. And we'll continue to do that.
In the meantime, this is fine.
Yes, yeah.
Troy.
Thank you, Troy and Carrie.
Thank you.
I think I'm Spain.
You are. Duvinage Financial Incentive Agreement, Jill Thompson, Director, and Amanda Gray, our Community Development Finance Specialist Department.
So we're here a bit on a cleanup item in order for us to close the file on a financial incentive agreement and to document the financial incentive agreement for audit purposes. So Duvinage entered into a financial incentive agreement with the city of Hagerstown in 2012. And this was to allow the company to essentially survive and expand by acquiring an Ohio-based stair company called Sharon Stairs. So they were very successful in acquiring the company, which allowed them to expand their product line from not just spiral staircases, but inline straight staircases as well. And part of the financial incentive agreement were job creation numbers from 2014 to 2018. And we are recommending that they have met the intent of the financial incentive agreement in seeking your approval to authorize staff to send them a letter of satisfaction, again, primarily for audit purposes. The size of the grant that the city provide was just under eighteen thousand and the job creation, we believe, met the intent, especially when you look at the full-time equivalents or the total hours and labor worked over that time period and not simply viewing it as headcount figures. And that's our recommendation. If you're in support, this would be voted on at next Tuesday's regular session.
And before you guys, can I just say that once we, when we went out and gave the man, honored him for fifty-nine years, that the CEO, I believe, or the director, he shared the thank you for, and I think I shared it with the council members that was there, to elected officials in this, at the city for this because they have been able to survive through two wars, you know, and still be able to make stairs. But they were also to acquire, you know, a contract that they wouldn't have been able to acquire without, you know, this type of program. So I just wanted to share that. They were very thankful. And also, they've been super engaged. I don't know who runs their social media, but they've been super engaged on social media. And even has people that are going out and stopping and just, you know, now understand what the stairs are. And so I want to say thank you to Economic Development for having us come along to, you know, honor someone fifty-nine years, but to be able to hear that directly, even as we're standing in the heat in our AC, being taken just before, they were still so very appreciative and thankful to staff.
Is there any questions on this or anything we can help answer?
Put a smiley face on it.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have leaseholder extension with Maryland Department of Labor. We have Doug Reiser, Economic Development Manager. Hi, Doug.
Hello.
It's been like a long time.
Yeah. So we have the Maryland Department of Labor and Licensing Regulations currently leasing space from the city. It's about a little over eleven thousand square feet in the Elizabeth Hager Center, looking at two to six north Potomac Streets. So Department of General, General Services sent in a letter request for an additional six-month holdover extension, which is from originally a January twenty-ninth of two thousand and seven lease agreement. This will be the fourth holdover request. So it would begin August first, two thousand and twenty-four through January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. The current annualized rent amount for the space is one hundred sixty-seven thousand one hundred dollars. And the state and the city are currently acting in good faith and all rental payments are current for this particular tenant. In your lease packet is the holdover letter and the state request to extend. So we'll be back next week at the regular session for the approval of the letter if you're in agreement.
Yeah. Why? Why do they want this?
We are working through a, currently with this tenant, we are working through a lease agreement. We've gone through architectural, so it's, it's working towards a long-term solution for this tenant.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. All right. Next we have Riamar Janine Hagerstown, Community Development, and that's Mayor and City Council members.
This is something that I think we are proposing here and is going to be a great, great boon in capitalizing on the momentum that we are currently experiencing here in the city. And that is, this presentation is reimagining Hagerstown Community Development by ensuring continuity, eliminating silos and aligning values. So why, why are we talking about this? What we see is a need to foster sustainable and organic growth and development within the city. And by, the way to do this is mandating cooperative and service-oriented relationships with homeowners, businesses, and all those that we serve. Placing our varying departmental interests on level footing and fostering cooperation between them is going to be critical in achieving the city's goals. We want to make sure that we share common goals and values, and that's made difficult currently with siloed departments, which is often end up working juxtaposition with each other. And to improve continuity of city leadership. And the community development is a core function of city government. All functions of city government should be subject to the oversight of elected representation and ultimately the voters from whom they serve.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
No, that's okay. Finish here. I'll wait, I'll save all of them.
So how, how do we envision reimagining this? And that is by departmental creation and organization, the setting of specific goals, embracing facilitative and accommodated, accommodative service models, and fostering an incentive mindset over a strictly deterrent mindset. What we're proposing is the creation of a new department, the Department of Community Development, which would include planning, zoning, permitting, code, inspections, and economic development. The department's primary roles would include the day-to-day administration of zoning, building regulations, rehabilitation, creating affordable housing, and creation of a vibrant and stable local business community. The department partners with other departments and agencies to stimulate economic growth, create new jobs, and plan for long-term development in the city. And the organization of the development must include positions that are accountable to multiple forces, balancing and furthering the city's entire goals. So here is a proposed organization, which would see the addition of a deputy administrator. And then you can see that those departments would fall to, would all be under one umbrella, zoning, code, economic development, planning staff, permitting staff, and economic development The deputy administrator position, we, first, we see this as being someone that, of course, would be nominated by the city administrator and brought to us like other high-level positions to the mayor and council for approval. And we would see a term for reconfirmation to be staggered with the city administrators, again, for continuity of, continuity of operations. And that person would help to balance missions of zoning, code, economic development to achieve the city's goals and to help work as an arbitrator for any contradictions or, or difficulties that would come up. And it would create resiliency and redundancy in city leadership. We also see this as a, having nominated by the deputy administrator and the administrator, Department of Community Development heads, which would be then, of course, confirmed by the mayor and council and would serve four-year terms staggered with the elections and would report to the deputy and administrator. The Department of Community Development would set goals that could be measured and present them to the administrator and mayor and council for approval, measurable success and shortcomings that can then be monitored and acted upon. The deputy administrator could make data-driven decisions when goals are not met or arbitrate when multiple goals seem to be in conflict and to act, again, as a go-between and an arbitrator. Would start with a mandate from mayor and council to rethink each position and process within the new department. Would start with a mandate from mayor and council to rethink each position and process within the new department and rethink and rebuild commissions and boards such as HDC, zoning appeals, building code, and technical appeals. Now, here are some examples of goals that could be put in place by this new department. Things like number of applications reviewed, turnaround times, reviews. You know, I won't go through all of them, but here's some examples in each department of goals that could be put in place to be measurable goals for the success that we will see with this department. Again, more example goals. These would be under our economic development. Things like number of new units, rehab units, incentives, things of those nature that we could actually measure the success. And again, additional goals for planning and historic preservation. Things like plan activity, number of application reviews, satisfaction, survey results, all things that could be measured and reported back. So facilitation and accommodation, that's the big driving factor of this. And the most basic goal of any city government is, of course, to promote health, safety, and the welfare of the public. However, we can't just codify and enforce our way to health, safety, and welfare. Citizens, homeowners, and businesses are the conduit for which the city is healthier and safer. So in their absence and without their efforts, cities erode and die. The city should facilitate and accommodate as much of an effort on their part as towards those ends. So we can't allow perfection to prevent forward progress. Antagonistic enforcement efforts stifle organic growth and development. That's why it's so important that we focus on facilitation and accommodation with this. And here's a few quotes by a book by Raymond Burby on building code enforcement and decline. And I specifically like one quote on here where it talks about, "Enforcement agencies do not always have to explicitly decide whether they're business-friendly or, and facilitated or not, but the strategies of enforcement and the resulting actions that they choose to set set the overall tone and signal philosophies." Again, incentive versus deterrent. Voluntary compliance is the most sustainable and far-reaching type of compliance model. The most critical component of facilitation is shifting from a deterrent-only model to, or deterrent-first model of enforcement to an incentive-focused model. An assembling of department that strives for cooperation and collaboration with stakeholders to foster an environment of voluntary compliance with city ordinances necessarily increases the health, safety, and welfare of citizens. Again, here's some quotes on the successes of being incentive-based versus deterrent-based. And finally, this model is not new. This model is tried and tested. It's successful in cities across the nation. I mean, if you just look at this list, Santa Monica, York, Pennsylvania, you know, all over the country, cities are using this model and seeing success in a collaborative model versus a deterrent-based model. So this is very exciting. The future is very bright, and we are seeing unprecedented investment in our city. The organizational and philosophical models that have been implemented in cities and towns across the country to great success. And instead of what we would do is replace, you know, this is the way things have always been done to, how do we work to a yes? Let's get to a yes. And our renaissance is going to require some innovation and imagination at every level. So that is why we are looking at reimagining this community development model. I know it's a lot to digest, but this is something that I think is very important to tackle.
I'd like to say that I think that any organization, public or private, always has to be looking at its internal structure. I will say personally, I was involved in something like this with a fairly large company. It wasn't exactly the, this type of reorganization, but it was, it was changing a multiple-site company from a decentralized to centralized. Now, albeit I didn't do it on public television, but it's a, sometimes a hard discussion to have. But at the end of the day, you know, the hope and desire is for any organization that makes it stronger and better and more, you know, continue to be viable. But at the same time, and I learned this from that situation, that it's because you have a combination of, you know, the, how things are laid out, and then, but there are also names and faces associated with that. And I would like to make sure, make it clear, at least from my perspective, but I think it's yours as well, that this is not about any of the names and faces. This is not about anything to do with the folks who fulfill the roles. It's about how do we put things in a way to, you know, help everybody make everything better. And we are at the point where, at least from my perspective in this city, that, I mean, we talked, we just had several conversations about several, you know, development projects, and a lot of times people think about, you know, moving forward as part of, you know, bricks and mortar and all that, and I know I do because it's kind of my background. But, but also in culture, you know, the cultural change that's happening. And, you know, I think that we have to put aside the, you know, the negative comments that people that don't even live here have to say, and we have to look for the bright future, as you said. So while I certainly would look forward to having some conversations about some of the details, even though this is a high level, there are a couple of details.
Sure.
You know, where things fit. But as a start, I personally think that, you know, it's an important conversation to have and so forth. And this is going to need as much input from senior leadership here, senior staff, because this is a fundamental change. And I think you know, I think most people around this table know, my favorite question is why? And my, the answers I never, the answer I never accept is because we've always done it that way. That doesn't work. If there's a good reason, that's great. If not, is there a better way? And I certainly appreciate the how do we get to yes comment because, at the end of the day, really, what the city is, is a vehicle to help those who live and work and do things in our community. And our, I think our role, meaning the council, the mayor, everybody that works for the city, is to try to figure out, how do we help make that happen?
That's right.
There may not always be the answer that somebody's looking for, but I think if the culture is, well, let me help you see if we can figure out a way to get that done as opposed to the answer's no, because that's not what we do.
Right. It's about a cultural shift and a way to help remove barriers, is what we're looking to do for economic growth.
No, you go ahead. You go ahead, because I'm, when I go, I'ma go. I got it. I'm in, because I feel conflict. And when I feel conflict, I want to make sure I capture feelings and values. And so I want to listen to everybody because when I go, I'ma go. So good.
Do you feel conflict among us?
No, not at all, but I just feel, first of all, some of the language, right? And so, since we're here, some of the language in here. So when you say mandate cooperation, what do you mean by that? Because to say mandate cooperation would be an attack on the current, current functioning people that are in position right now, right? And so I would say, what do you mean by that? Because I would think that our city administrator would already enforce cooperation if the direction was from the elected body. And so, again, I hear that it's not about positions, it's not about the staff, it's not about that, and I get it. But some of the language, it would make me feel, if I was working here, it would make me feel as though I am not doing the appropriate thing. And so I just want to make sure I capture the feelings and values. I'm not staying at this table. Another thing, too, is that I feel as though, I'll hold that.
If I may respond to that, I think that anything that we set up, we have to make sure that we've set it up for long-term and that when you set goals and you set a culture and you set a, you know, a mandate for a department, that you spell it out, really, what we're looking for.
So when you say mandate cooperation, what do you mean by that? Like, that's what I would ask, so that that way,
Sure.
exactly what you mean, right? That it's presenting this, that that way I can understand, that way I can reflect it back.
Sure. So for me, what that would be is spelling out in kind of the core tenets of this, that what we're looking to do is be that, instead of deterrent-first, to be that collaborative-first and to actually just make sure it's written into kind of our values and our vision with this. Not to say that it's not existing now, but to make sure that it's written, you know, and it's part of it.
I'm following you. I'm following you. And so I want to say to that, I'm not, first of all, the structure change is not what I'm, this is not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the conflict within conversation, right? That's just the role that I play. And I want to, first of all, say that I feel as though when we came into this administrative, those that were, this administrative, those that were elected in 2020 to sit down at this table, we came up with some correct language, that we set some goals, that we set these things for this next four years. And so, again, I'm not against having a conversation about a new thing. I just want to know, like, at what point in the conversation do we talk about these types of things which are specific to the staff performance? Which, again, I'm not against talking about it, but we're going to be real about it if we are. We're not going to sit here and act as if this is not to say that staff is not following through, whether it's, you know, you know, I don't want us to, I don't want us to cover this up, right? I want us to either be real about it and say why we are here, or I want us to go back to the 2020 conversation that the elected body had where our vision statement says the city of Hagerstown will inspire an inclusive, business-friendly, sustainable community with clean, safe, and vibrant neighborhoods. And our mission, being the city of Hagerstown, shall be a community-focused municipality. And so our feelings and values were captured. Again, I'm not specifically attacking the, anything new. Again, it's just conflict, and I can, I can feel it sitting here. And so if I can feel it sitting here, and I don't think it's conflict within us, but I can, I can feel an underlying something. And I never, ever will sit at the head of this table and play games with the public during this time. I won't.
Madam Mayor, I think that I was there when we decided and was
You were. That's why I was hoping you would present this.
To our vision statement, I just don't think we're there yet.
Okay.
I think that we have work to do to become absolutely business-friendly. And I know that Scott is working towards, you know, there are things with the Sierra Collins and, you know, trying to work toward some more cultural change. I just think that because of the next level of development, because of the mid-level of development that is occurring, that we need a better hand-holding approach from particularly code and permitting and in that way. And I think that this structure that has been proven throughout the country is a way to get to that. And in, for me, the facilitation of this and the next step, our charter doesn't even reflect currently the way that we are doing it. Like, the charter is already not the way that we are, the way that code is being, is being done. So my, in my mind, over the next few months, that the, the way the charter would change in the organizational chart, that all of the details can be worked out, the hiring can be done afterwards for the deputy administrator, you know, all of those things. And, and that that's the way that the next quarter of this administration needs to be taking place. Not that it needs to be, you know, there's, there's no firing going on, there's no replacement, none of that. It's really just the charter that, because what we have, we as a council empower code and those positions to make decisions based on, I mean, like, we empower that, but yet we are not, there's no real goal-setting that we're a part of. So that person, that person in those, in that seat is basically a lifetime appointment. And we know how that works with the Supreme Court. It doesn't. A lifetime appointment really isn't that. So it's really more of a, looking at, with this body as the charter and those changes. And while that, the rest of this presentation is, you know, I've received enough feedback, and Matt's received enough feedback, and we've all received feedback.
I was about to say some of that.
Right. We've all received feedback as to the way it feels for some of the smaller developers. I mean, it's literally on page three of this document that we saw just a little while ago. It's here, it's in black and white. So I just, the presentation, I feel as if we are making great changes towards Hagerstown's future. And this could literally be a legacy that we are, we are the town that people want to develop in.
I agree. And I'm not, again, I'm not pushing back against what was proposed. And so please, don't misunderstand me. I'm not pushing back. I just want to make sure that it's clear. And so I would have a question for you. Do you feel as though that some things have shifted and changed within the last six years? Because you've been at the table on the sixth. So I would, I would ask then, so you don't feel as though it has changed because of the amount of development that maybe?
Oh, I think that there's more development, but I think that those are, you know, for, take the stadium, for example. They didn't have to go through code and permitting. They're their own department. They didn't have to do any of that. So yes, there are, there are bigger developments. We've got Amazons, we've got Lowe's, and we've got big, big corporations and big things, big warehouses and such. When it comes to like the smaller developers and the smaller, you know, the homeowners and things like that, we haven't reached that point yet, and we are going to. And I feel as if we take that, the same model that has been in place since 2008, where, you know, that was the, that was the route that was taken back in 2008 as enforcement. And this was, the city council at that time said, this is the way it's going to be because we have slum lords or whatever that was, and it's never shifted back. And this is our opportunity as this body to shift it back based on models that are across the rest of the country.
Well, of this, of this presentation, I do like the goal aspect of it. As I said, with the, the goal to be data-driven and measurable, I think like that aspect, especially when you get the customer service feel of the goals, right? And you get the feedback. We get good feedback, too, you know, from developers, like, we'll get them via emails or in person. But I think having something more presentable would also help boost morale as far as our development is concerned. But I do, I do like the measurable part. I do. I do. The minor reviews, even if it's major, you know, if there was a case where there's been a really bad experience, why was that? Further looking into that and how we can go about fixing that. But I will all be under this whole goal-setting of how you can get to that discussion. So I really like that part.
Well, not to mention, it just holds, again, you know, we as, we as a council empower these positions. And there's literally no accountability. I mean, we hold Scott accountable. We hold Scott accountable.
So I want to, I want to challenge that, right? Because if this elected body has positioned him, then are we saying that his, that coming to him is not going to get the message? Is that, and do we?
Uh-uh. No, no, no.
Okay.
Because he, so the city Cause he'll, he, so the city administrator will make the recommendation for the deputy administrator, and Scott needs the help. You know, the, the team needs the help, I believe, um, code and economic development and permitting. I mean, there, there, I think that Scott would be, I mean, pardon me if I'm wrong, that a deputy administrator is a, is something that is modeled close to us. And Scott would come, pardon me?
I said, it's the language, I just, because.
The thing is, I mean, the, the PowerPoint presentation is, it is what it, I mean, it's really not about the language in the presentation, it's really the, the end result. And again, we have my thought process when I spoke with Matt, and I spoke with each of you individually as well, and Matt did too, is that it's the accountability of that position and being, you know, not only is the city admin, the deputy administrator is concurrent with the city administrator, but that these positions also are reviewed on a four-year basis, six-year basis, whatever it looks like, to be, to be in, you know, like, okay, if, if we hear a bunch of complaints about that position, then we, as a body who empower that position, should be able to make the determination, we represent the citizens in this community. And we have to remember that, so it's there, you know, if they don't get a chance, it's just like this appointment forever, and this like, this position forever, then it doesn't matter, and we are the ones that empower this position.
I was remembering, you went and got your books.
What?
You went and got your books. I'm not challenging it, I'm not, I'm just, it's the language, and I don't want the public to misunderstand the language around this, as if we don't already make the decisions to have a conversation. I, I answer, I answer to everyone just as much as everyone else sitting here. And I just, I don't want it to sound like I'm coming against, I'm not. But I do conflict resolution, I'm gonna reiterate that, I do conflict resolution, and I'm not an expert on anything else, but I'm very experienced with conflict resolution. And I don't want that feeling in here, I want us to, I don't, I don't want that, so, I'm not pushing.
Elected or appointed to represent the people outside of these walls.
Uh, you don't have to tell me that, okay. So that's exactly why, because in my role, right, is that I want to make sure that I'm clearing that in my role as a, as a mediator. So I understand that we are all elected, appointed, whatever, we're here. I'm not, I, again, I, it's conflict, I can see, I can, the language, I can, it, it just, it comes off, again, I'm not against some of the things in here, but some of the language was, I have specific questions about, but I would ask in any type of situation, even before I would ask staff how they are feeling. These are, again, we have people that come, that sat there, that we ask very question, that we, we ask questions to in the same type of tone, with the same type of seriousness. Now, this is where I'm at, like, I, this is the tone, this is the seriousness, but it's not in reference to the structure. It's in reference to the conflict that's in the communication of how the structure should happen.
I mean, to, to speak to that, I would say, for me, I've heard, um, time, I'm, I'm new at the table, or relatively new at the table, but I've heard time and again that previous administration have guided our departments to be a bit more punitive, um, in, in our way of enforcement and getting to where a code needs to be in the past by our directive at this, at this table. And we've never undone that, we've never changed direction. And for me, it's, this is a very formalized and structured way to make sure that we're giving that direction. And we're making sure that we're aiming, aiming the direction that, that we intend things to, to be, or the way that we intend things to be handled, right? Um, that's, that's what it is for me, and this is a very formal and measurable way to, to direct it in the way that, that we feel appropriate at this time, you know, the way, the way the city's going and our growth is, so.
Thank you.
Kristin.
But, so, a couple of things, um, and I'm not gonna speak to a lot of this. The first thing I'll say is, I haven't seen this before, so the first thing I'll do. Yeah, today. Yeah, so the first thing I'll say is, is I apologize to city staff, because this is not how I would manage a government I'm responsible for, let alone govern, an entity that I am entrusted to. So that's the first thing I'll say to the, uh, indication that we would, uh, employ individuals uh, subject to the, uh, interests of the next elected body. Which is what that page says. The second thing I'll say is, uh, and again, I didn't see this until the other day, uh, is that I would apologize to citizens, because I do not subscribe to the notion that voluntary compliance is the most sustainable and far-reaching type of compliance model. Uh, maybe I've been around too long, maybe I've been a part of too many governmental entities to have the belief that that simply works itself out. Um, and the third thing I'll say is, I understand what the interest of this proposal is attempting to do. And it gets to the specific page that references getting to yes. And if that's the issue, then that's the issue. And I don't think that it applies to any specific employee of any specific department of this governmental body. And I brought these books in here to say the same thing that I've said over and over to the beginning of these discussions. And it doesn't matter which administration I feel I've been part of, this arises. But here's the reality, this is the code of the city of Hagerstown. Nobody, nobody, not businesses, not citizens, not employees, make the rules in this book. We do. So if there's some avenue that somebody doesn't have the ability to get to yes on, that some directive, that some city employee is carrying out, it's because it exists within the rules that we have directed them to apply. And if we want to change the rules, then we should do that as a body in plain public session. I think that's the best and most consistent way to empower your employees to carry out the directives that you want. The second thing, not the citizens, not the businesses, not the employees, create our budget. We do that at this table, those are our two charges, right? We appropriately govern over the city's finances, and we appropriately govern over the city's rules. And so if there are, is, if there is consternation over either of those two things, then we need to deliberate that at this table in plain public view and make those appropriate changes. And again, I understand what this document is attempting to say, but I don't think that it is conveying that in a way that I certainly, uh, could agree with.
Madam Mayor, you have two yeses to get to this, do you have a third?
Oh, I thought we were talking like high level of.
No, it's really just the, it's the, the only.
So Matt and, and Shelley are.
Only part.
Who's yes?
Well, the, the part that it's, it's this, in, and again, the details after it, but it's really the charter changes in order to make the, the confirmation and the terms for the, uh, reconfirmation of those positions. Otherwise, and, and, and a proposal to fix the rest of it.
And I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt, but we are in, we are entering August, right? And I have what I believe to be a pretty intimate understanding of the deliberations that have to occur to go through charter change. Which, if that's what this is implying, then what we're suggesting is that this body, you know what I mean, in the crux of, of, of a few months, is considering making significant changes to a charter that most probably the next body will ultimately deliberate on. Cause I don't know that there's enough months left in that process.
Again, I think that, you know, Scott and Ann, Scott and the attorney have had this presentation. And I, you know, it would be my expectation that in the next two weeks to lay out a timeline for the charter changes and what that looks like and, and present it to us in two weeks, so that we can, you know, see what that is. And again, the appointment of the, of this deputy administrator, and, I mean, that's all up to the next body. It's, that's, that's not the point of it, it's really holding those positions accountable. That's, that's the crux of this, it's that. And all of the, all of the other parts of it can be worked out in discussions with city's staff input and Scott's input, and it's really just the, the putting in those positions to be held accountable because we empower those positions. That's the part, and the timeline for how long, and again, does it take three months, does it take four months? It'd be different if this was something that was completely made up and that, but it's a proven, it's a proven model across the country. And why wouldn't we try? Why, why are we gonna just always do it the way it's always been done, why wouldn't we try?
I don't think that we do it the way that's, I don't think that this administration came in in twenty twenty, and I'm, I am, I'm feeling a little bit defensive, and I wanna, I wanna clearly say my feelings, because I don't, I'm feeling defensive, because I don't think that that's, I think that we did come in and, and say we want this administration to be the different one, and we want to get to the yes. And we don't want to find, we don't want staff to, you know, find or create barriers around different things. And I thought that's, I thought that's who we were, and that's who we are. And so again, I'm not, I, I'm only feeling defensive because it feels as if we don't already have that power and authority. And I don't, I, I just, it, it feels, it feels really icky right now, I have to tell you. It just, I'm gonna call it for what it is, it feels really, really yucky.
I feel really great about it.
Well, that's good, that's good for you, and I, I, again, that's, I, I think that that's the difference in who we are, right? I'm not feeling upset about, you know, a structure change or having the conversation that elected officials should have. I'm, I'm feeling, and I'm discerning, and, and, and to, to keep feeling as if I'm, I'm feeling and discerning something that's not right, is again, making me want to question myself, which I know I don't need to. Because one thing about conflict, that we talk about changing culture, we talk about accountability. I, I mean, we, we, we say these things are our values, and again, I, the conversation that we should have, it feels yucky. And again, it feels, it, and I'm gonna say this too, it feels deceptive. It does, it feels deceptive, it feels like there's a.
I find that offensive, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I'm sorry that you, that you're offended, but I feel deceived. And so now that you feel offended and I feel deceived, I think that, you know, it's not a personal thing, again, you didn't present it, Matt did.
That was the intention.
Okay, so it's not about.
This isn't my, this isn't my.
So then I don't, then why do you feel offended?
Because you felt deceived.
Yeah. With you, councilwoman.
This isn't about me, this isn't about me, not at all, this isn't about me, so, again.
I'm not, again, I, I'm directing my, to who presented. And so around the language, around mandated, around things that it seems as if we are poor leaders, um, that, that the public has put in positions, uh, one, two, three, at the table, that elected, that are, that have been irresponsible for the last three years, that's what I'm, that's what I picked up. If I was watching this meeting, I would say, well, damn, what have they been doing all this time? That's what I would have said, that's what I would say. If I was the everyday person, that's what I would say.
The message that I would hope comes out of this would be, I would like personally, this is me personally, I would like to see a shift in our philosophy as it comes to economic development and code enforcement, to be a more facilitative model and to help internally, especially, um, we, you know, they all work hand in hand, our, our departments, we have economic development, we have.
Are you saying that that doesn't happen now?
No, I'm, I'm not at all, um, but.
Because I'm concerned about the silo, what, what your thoughts are as departmental silos? Cause I can have any number of staff come up and, and explain to you how that is, there are no silos within the group that you're talking about.
What, and, and again, all, with all due respect, Scott, with all due respect, from, from my point of view, I'm just trying to think of a way that we can make this easier with less barrier for, for any kind of, you know, code, new business, growth, any way that we can make it better. And, and maybe it doesn't look exactly like this, but, uh, this is.
Well, that's what we're being, that's what you're being asked to vote on right there.
Right, that the.
And I agree with you, it doesn't, it shouldn't look like that.
I, you, you know, I, again, I don't feel as though that it's wrong or that it's out of order to want to have conversations, but I do, the conversations that I have with the community, especially, uh, folks that, you know, are finding, uh, barriers or issues with code or with, um, economic development, they're about personalities, less about structure, more about personalities. And so I think that, uh, that's what I hear, that's my feedback, um, that I have. It is about, but I, it's the same with the police department, it's the same, like, it's the thing, it's the same throughout the city that there's a personality that has been disrespectful, a personality that's not, those are the things that I'm hearing. So culturally, how could we deal and get better with that on, on mindsets and personality-type things? That's what I hear a lot about in, in development.
And I would say back to the solid approach comment and, uh, statement in this presentation, we hear that from developers, that they don't feel like that there is a continuity approach, that, that it needs to be all hands on deck to welcome the homeowner, the developer, the person that's expanding their house, the, you know, whatever that looks like, that it needs to be kind of a cultural shift and that we are, that it truly is a privilege to build and live and work in this, in this city. And I think that that is, again, the model that was presented is not anything new. It just isn't what we do here in Hagerstown.
Is there a three?
I just want to get clarification, because I thought that today's topic was a discussion, not necessarily have a vote.
It's just a head nod.
Because, like you said, we'll work out the details later, but I think we should have the details in front of us to know what that looks like. And we don't, we don't have that right now. However, I do, I am, you know, I, I commend you, Councilman Schindler, for even coming up with a reimagining approach, because like we said, you know, we don't like, we've always done it this way, and we always looking for, um, stepping outside of the, the, the norm to find other solutions, so I'm totally commendable on that. Um, and I would rather have like, like an actual work session to go through what we actually expect of this potential new model and what that looks like, you know what I mean? Like, we could take some. Like, we could take some excerpts out of this or incorporate our own instead of just saying, yes, right now, we're gonna do this right now. You know, like, we had, we had work sessions before in the past, in the beginning of administration, we had the whole strategic plan. And we all got together, um, staff was, staff was present, we were present, we invited delegate, you know, Senator there. We always present to have that type of work session for goal setting. And I don't, I think that would be um, important to have in this type of reimagining. I do, I don't think it's, 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 it's not a bad idea. It's a great, it's a great concept. But what that looks like written down, we don't have that per se, what that looks like as far as, you know, timing and, and, you know, we, we've been saying we like to get input from people, we do. But have an actual work session to work out the things together, I will be in favor of, of doing so.
The only head nod, the only thing is the, for you to present a timeline for us to be able to change the charter with this structure.
I, I
That's it.
And, and as I had the conversation with you uh, for about an hour the other day on this, I, I don't, I, I think a charter change is, is a drastic step at this point, at this point in time, with three months left in an administration. You know, Councilman Alshire was, was, was correct when he said, you know, there's a budget book. And there are costs associated to everything you put, you've just put in there. A deputy city administrator is gonna cost a little bit of money. Uh, the other thing that's gonna cost a little bit of money is how I look at all the other staff and how they get compensated. That's gonna cost a little bit of money. So you're probably, you're looking at hundreds of thou, uh, at least, you know, what's the deputy city administrator gonna get hired for? The other thing that concerns me again is, you know, we talk about, you know, developers feel this way, developers feel that way. Councilman Schiller uh, provided a, a situation where he had a developer that uh, felt that he was being uh, mistreated by the city. And I said, let's bring him in, talk to him. And we brought him in to talk to him. I had staff sitting there to talk to him, had the person who felt was aggrieved, talk to him. Once there was a discussion, then that developer's, oh, I, I didn't really realize that that's how that worked. And maybe, you know, maybe if these, if those conversations would have been had initially, we could have avoided some of those concerns. Also mentioned voluntary compliance. We'll talk a little bit about how voluntary compliance is working when I mentioned trash here a few minutes. Voluntary compliance has to, you know, has to have cooperation on both sides. And uh, trying to get the yes in an enforcement situation can be somewhat of a difficult thing to do when you're trying to enforce an ordinance that this body has passed. Uh, if we don't enforce it a hundred percent, you all can come back on staff. If I've got one of these contracted positions that makes a wrong decision, that is confirmed, and that person is confirmed by the council, how is that person gonna make that decision when he knows his job may be online if he makes, if he makes the wrong choice? And upsets three council members. I mean, I just think there, I, I agree with, with Councilman or Councilmember Burnett. I think this is a conversation, I don't know if that conversation can be had in the next three months before another administration. If four of you, if, if four of you are still here, makes it a lot easier conversation, right? You're gonna have one, you're gonna have a new mayor and you're gonna have a new, uh, one new council member. But uh, I, I, I agree with Councilmember Burnett. This is more than just a hour conversation. And plus, I got staff out there that are wondering what the hell is going on now. I, I, and this is my fault, folks back there. I communicated one thing to you that I thought this discussion was gonna be about philosophically, and we've talked about that, right? Uh, and that's not what this turned into. Um, so I apologize to you guys. I, I failed you on that one.
I don't think you failed it.
Can I finish, Mayor, please?
Yes, please.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I, I could not agree more that there needs to be, uh, that there needs to be some philosophical changes in how we do a lot of things in, in this city. Hundred percent agree with you. And I don't think there's any staff member out there sitting or any one of them that I'm sure are watching that would disagree with that either. Do we have to get into a charter to make those changes? I would hope you had a little bit more trust in staff than, than that to be able to uh, to be professional and deal with that. I, I do. I look at every one of these faces out here and I see that, right? So I, we, we would pledge you and I, and I, if none of you, if somebody done, if somebody doesn't agree with me out there, let me know. But I'll pledge you that that's how it will work, to make that philosophical change. And the one thing we won't, we won't do, we will not do, and we will not compromise the safety of our citizens by how the code is applied that you all have passed. We can't do that. Then that, then we fail. We fail on that. If you got a part of that code that y'all don't like, you want changed, just as Councilman Alshire, Alshire said, that you're, you all can do it and we'll, we'll be right there and support you. But to try to make these changes in the next three months with this administration when it could be, it, I, I don't think it will be. It could be five new ones sitting here and certainly a new person sitting next to me.
Right.
I think, uh, I think that, uh, I don't, I don't think that's a proven course to take. I'm so, thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry.
I wanna make it, I wanna make it perfectly clear that this concept, just like our, our conversation last week, has been in discussion with you and I for well over a year. And that this has been in your hands for six months or more. Not this particular presentation, but this conversation.
I, I just wanted to say that I don't feel as though anyone could be failed by us coming together and having conversations that um, could be tough, could be hard. Um, so that's why I, I just wanted to, like, this is what we're elected and, and, and positions are appointed to do and what your job is. And so I don't feel as though um, that's a fail, right? Like, I think that the direction of the conversation, um, for me, instantly, um, I, I began to feel, like, I just began to feel and discern the conflict within the, the language, but I'm a language person. Um, and so I, I, I don't, I think that I, I'm not gonna apologize, but I do feel as though I kind of wanted to pull out feelings and values and I kinda wanted to address it outside of being mayor, even though I'm mayor, um, but kinda hear feelings and values and ask some questions. And ask some questions because again, the public is, is who we all answer to. And I don't, some things that's sitting here at the table, I just, uh, uh, it just struck me as, as, uh, I felt, I felt as though there was, there's some deception. Um, and I don't know what it is. And I, but again, I don't feel as though staff could be failed in that way. Um, yeah. And I, I, oh, I had a question, I'm sorry. How long does the char- charter change take?
I, I, I honestly don't know. I don't know.
It becomes effective forty-five days after it's approved. So it's a resolution to change the charter and then there is a waiting period. And I'm not sure if it's forty-five days or fifty days. One is annexation, one is a charter change. I could look at Councilmember Alshire's book, but it's, it takes several months, like two months, I would say.
Is it possible to still put that timeline into place just so we can see it? If that is the direction that we take. So, to be able to do this in this administration, as to whatever the structure, again, I'm committed to the structure, so.
I, I personally would, you know, I took something very much to heart, um, that I heard at MML through the weekend, um, from Governor Moore. And that's that we should be governing data-driven and heart-led.
That's right.
Um, and for me, this is a way to officially shift the, the kind of directive of how historically, you know, we've guided our staff. You know, to, to handle code enforcement and things like that in a particular way. It's not the staff's fault, that was by a directive of an administration to, to handle things in a certain way.
What do you mean? So you're talking about like the, the structure of the, because I, I wanna understand like with or Councilwoman McIntyre or Alshire, could you tell me, like, is it, was there something that happened that we made it more, um, deterrent, less incentive, or made it more punitive, thus that has happened that we have not gone back to? Cause I heard Councilmember Schindler say that. Um, and was that pre, um, you know, me sitting at the table? Was there some changes that happens within uh, code? Or maybe it's staff that answers that. But I wanna know, like, what was it before? When was it before? Um, and then, am I making sense? Do, do you get my question?
I wasn't around in two thousand eight. I was the county commissioner then, so I don't know what.
So in two thousand and eight, these changes?
I just heard that number, or year, I, I wasn't.
In two thousand and eight, an organization, pretty much exactly like what you have here was created. And that was called D C E D. Right.
Okay, okay, so it's, okay, all right, I'm, I'm capturing, I'm catching you now. Um, okay.
That's, that's just, I mean, that's what I'd like to see. I'd like us to be able to set up a way to, to say like, hey, we wanna be more collaborative. And to, the city administrator Scott, to your point, the, the type of meeting that you referenced earlier is exactly what should be our standard. That, that was fantastic. And it got a lot of heads at the table. And, and it cut through a lot of the misunderstandings and the, you know, the waiting around and, and to just get the decision makers and the important people at the table at once to, to let things move forward, right? To let progress happen. And that's what I'm trying to do. I'm, I'm trying to find a way that we can, I wanna say codify, it's not the right word, but I don't quite have the right word. I'm, I'm looking for a way, and, and I apologize if my language is, is, you know, not represent, not representative of the intent. But I, I'm looking at a way that we can give a blueprint or a structure to, to, to get to that. To, to make sure that our interactions with the business community and to the developers and small businesses that wanna open in this town, just to make it, remove barriers in any way that we can. And to your, to your point, that, that meeting was great. Um, anytime where we can get people together and more of a collaborative, if we can somehow put that on paper and give a blueprint or a guide to our staff, that, that's what I'm looking for is a way that we can say, hey, look, this is what we wanna do. And, and, and the code's a code. I mean, the code is a code. In that instance, it was nothing about code. It was about getting the people at the table, get, getting kind of the mindset of no, you know, wait, you gotta talk to this person, whatever that might be. Just to, to remove those barriers and make sure that everyone's talking to everybody and to get things moving in a way of progress. Maybe Councilmember Burnett is right. Maybe we need to do, have a, a workshop where we sit down and, and maybe in a few weeks or whatever, we, we sit down and we flesh this out, right?
Yeah.
But we, I think we need something to, to make sure that what we're trying to do isn't stymied, right? That we're, that we're able to keep progressing, this investment that we're seeing, that we're gonna continue that next wave of investment. And we're not, you know, by no fault of staff or whatever, but just that we're making sure that we remove those barriers and we can get this growth and investment that we want to create. I, that's what I'm looking to do. So, a way to put it on paper.
So in two thousand and seven, my brief period in the private sector, I did contract work uh, for an engineering firm, uh, for the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission. It was zoning work. And it was for an area of Bethesda that was going under a, uh, going through a renaissance period at that time. And I was directed to review the code for a number of projects that were being proposed, wherever they were taking, uh, properties that were one and two story and they wanted to do, you know, six and eight story, et cetera. And about the second project then, it was a very good process because you would go down, each representative of each department would be in these sort of, they would have like three charrette meetings with the proposed, the developer, right? And that way, everybody in the room and the developer could sort of hear what concerns may uh, uh, exist for this, for each particular development project. And they literally had a representative from each department and they had these meetings each week. So there were once a week, an individual from the department was committed to that meeting process to facilitate and, and, you know, lay out any concerns. Two takeaways from that. One, that was a very good process that should absolutely be considered to be employed or applied here in this city for exactly the projects you're talking about. To smooth those issues and concerns so that I'm not reading a piece of paper from somebody's perspective of being aggrieved by delays that they have uh, uh, perceived to encounter, that are now coming to ask us for funding. Uh, and not be able to hear the perspective of those various departmental entities, uh, or the architect, or the applicant, et cetera. Everybody's in the room. And they, and you said, you go through about three iterations of that before everybody sort of understands the clarity of the marching orders uh, cooperatively and moving forward. That's the first takeaway. Very good process. I'd be sued for the second part. The second takeaway was it was clear after about the second or third uh, iteration of my very technical review of the code applying to some of these projects, that I was likely not the individual they wanted to invite back because I was pointing out things within the code, that frankly speaking, uh, developers well-connected to that community activity, wanted to make sure it got passed. And so what I say to that is, it's a very good process. Absolutely opposed to the politicizing of my role in that process so that something could get moved through. So if we can find a way to do both, then that's the most applicable and consistent and fair way of doing. And that's why I say when I read this, I understand what it's saying. I just don't feel that it's saying or intending to say what we want to actually have happen. And I think is, to your point, of a greater conversation of exactly those things that we'd like to see occur.
Madam Mayor, where do we go?
Scott said yes to um, having the charter timeline.
Can you have it to us by next Friday, the twenty-sixth?
By next Friday? Sure.
I'm a no to changing the charter.
I just want the timeline.
Yeah.
That's it. You can, we'll vote on the charter change.
And I guess to, to move forward, um, from here, can we set a date to have like a, a follow-up to this?
I think that
Would that be appropriate?
I think that setting the date
Should be done for, if there's even any talk about charter.
Yes, I do. I think that we could get a date to have a conversation. Um, yeah, and, yeah, and um, you're, you've been, you've been staring at me and um, I don't know if you, I can't, I don't have my glasses on, but do you have something that you wanna say? Um, because I, I watch, I, I like, watched you too. I'm not sure if you're, you know, like, if you, but.
Well, I, I tried to say what I thought I needed to say in my initial comments. I won't recount those because I watch them on Facebook. But at the same time, I will the piece that I will re, will reiterate is, I think I said, um, that while in general, this is important and I think should move forward in the sense that but I also said there were some things in there that I think we needed to talk about. There were some words, some diagrams and so forth that um, in reviewing it, you know, I think we need, the council needs to come to a consensus on what it is that we're moving forward with. This is, like I said, again, you know, I've been through this kind of transformational discussion. But it doesn't happen necessarily in, in, in kind of public view in the sense that, you know, private companies and so forth do things internally. Um, so I say that because it had to have a starting point. This conversation had to have a starting point because this body is mandated by law and ethics and the right thing to do, to have this discussion in open session in public. So you have to have a starting point. So that's how I look at this. I don't know what's all involved, uh but I do know it's worth having the conversation. So I'll actually kind of defer. I was thinking about what to say and then councilwoman, councilwoman Burnett basically said what I was gonna say, which is de- uh variation on what I said earlier, which is we need to have the discussion. This is a starting point. We need to have a discussion. We need to know what's happening, what the technical requirements are and so forth. I said, I want to hear from, you know, our staff leadership in detail. So I would encourage the 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 work session concept. At the same time, I would like to know what our timeframe is. I think that if if we come up with a good plan, I think we ought to implement it. Whether it's at the end of the term or not. So, but I don't want anybody to do anything in a vacuum. And that's, I think, part of what I'm thinking about. So I would encourage that. I don't know if you want to do it as quick as the end of this month. But, you know, we have a free Tuesday, whatever that's worth.
Well, we haven't heard from any of the staff to actually do the job either. So I'm sure there's plenty of input they would like to provide based upon some of the information that they'll see when, not now. Because none, nobody, none of them have seen this.
And that's why I proposed to to have a working session, a strategic working session, obviously publicized, right?
It's gonna be during the daytime, like a couple hours.
Couple hours set aside. It was, it was planned. We asked for stakeholders to be there. We had lunch. Donna, thank you for the lunch at the time. Uh but to sit at the table, to come together and, you know, use this as a, it's a great concept. It's a, it's a great starting guide, great tool to use and work off of of that and get staff's input on, you know, if they have any other great ideas too. I I don't know. I don't know right now at this moment, you know, so that's my proposal.
And I am, I'm more protective of this entire body than people may realize in my demeanor and in the way that I I'm more protective. Um, and when I say protective, like the entire process is important to me. Um, also, I I also have, I've had some serious um issues around like when it becomes close to it's be getting ready to be election time and the division and the divisiveness that that is happening within community and to to, so I don't want it to be as if I'm pushing back. I don't, I don't have a vote. That's not it. What I am is protecting the process, which that's who I am. Even if I was sitting there or if I was sitting in the gallery, I'm going to attempt to protect the process. And also, um, my demeanor, my face and my um, uh, my eyes and all of that is not necessarily about me being angry or about me being upset. I will, I will out stare anything and anyone because I'm trained to do it. I'm trained to look directly into a person's eyes for two hours if it takes. It's not me attempting to intimidate. It's not me upset. It is literally my training. And so I just want to be completely clear on that, that there's no pushback against personalities or a person, but I am always going to challenge the process. I'm going to challenge the language because again, politics is messy. And because politics is messy, I'm going to protect the process at this table. And so I'm down for a strategic meeting, um, a couple hours. I think that we should throw with, you know, folks that have, you know, work schedules and that kind of thing. Um, I think we should throw some dates maybe, uh, you know, out there, um, and kind of see what would be the best, uh, and sooner than later.
As long as we can include stakeholders as well.
Oh, absolutely. I think so.
So it's not just council and staff and stakeholders.
Well, I just meant to throw the dates out there for particularly for council. Just the dates, I'm specifically talking about people that have jobs that I don't want to say, okay, next Tuesday, we're gonna be all day long. I mean, not Tuesday, because you're probably prepared for Tuesday. But next Friday, we're gonna do a whole lunch thing. I just think that out of respect, that we should throw out some dates, especially for, um, you guys that have jobs and roles to do. So that's what I was referring to when I said the dates. And I I agree, stakeholders should absolutely be there.
Perfect.
Anything else? No? We good? Elected official pay, benefits and reimbursements, mayor and city council.
You all had spoken about um wanting to talk about how compensation is done for uh the elected body. If you're still willing to have that conversation, you asked to have it.
Did you do any research on that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I did a complete analysis.
Right.
Provided that to city staff.
Now we just have, yeah.
I feel confident in that uh uh information gathering and the applicability that it has to our comparable roles. You know, among those uh comparable jurisdictions. So I don't know, you know, you're, you're welcome to use that information at your leisure uh for this topic of of discussion. But I think it provided a pretty comprehensive uh comparison between, you know, uh, the historical changes that those neighboring jurisdictions have made uh over time. Uh, the roles and responsibilities, you know, of land, population, uh governance uh that this body uh shares and um the structure, you know, uh of the body. So that's the best I could do with it.
I'm trying to remember. I don't remember seeing that. Did that make its way to the rest of the council or?
I don't know that I sent it to the rest of council. I just sent to Scott and said, here's, yeah, here's the info I have.
I mean, in general, I think we should have that conversation because I think that there are things that are inequitable. But what the answer is, like mostly other things.
And this hasn't been changed in Donna, well over a decade. Yeah, this has, the compensation structure hasn't been changed in twenty plus years.
So the mayor was last changed in, I want to say, uh, the late nineties and the council sometime before that.
So for me, there's two pieces to this. There's the, the, there should be a better way, and I think the better way in the long run, going after the next term is a public commission to review salary levels and and that should be in the middle of the term because you can only change the rate every four years at the beginning of a new term. And so consequently, that should happen two years from now for the following term, the one that starts in December of this year. In the meantime, there should, you know, the other piece of it to me is there should be a base correction. That they, that commission that ultimately will be in place for the following time will have to work on. And I, I thought there was some discussion that there would be some research and I I hear that Councilman Alsher has. I don't know if if you've done some, but I'm, I'm, I'm willing to have that conversation. Maybe not at seven o'clock right, but I think we should have that conversation between now and the end of this term. Sooner rather than later, hopefully, but, you know, we can't change anything tomorrow or the next month or even this year, you know, it changes next year because that's the beginning of the new four year cycle. That's what I would suggest if we haven't already. I don't know if we already decided to do that or not.
And that's where I think we were.
We wanted to head nod, then I'm nodding my head.
None of us were sure where that was left after the last discussion, which is why we, none of us felt like there was a true direction that was given as to where to go with that. But getting, getting you the research of of the local area, what, and it's all over the place, by the way. Getting that to you and then you all deciding on how you want to do this, moving, moving forward for the next administration. We can do that same timeline. We're doing this.
I was about to say, could that be something that we uh add to the things that we would talk about during our strategic planning meeting that we would have for a couple hours with lunch?
Sure.
That's, I'm happy to forward that email on to you.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's gonna be that complicated, honestly. It's gonna be, what is the right number? But, yeah, that's fine. We can do that. I wouldn't want to take away from the other discussion in minutes and hours.
Like you said, it won't take much time. You're thinking to get it so that we can have the discussion more sooner than adding it to another agenda and that kind of thing, that maybe staff can kind of get it together and have it there. That's, that's where my mindset was with that.
Okay.
Are we on the comments?
Are we good? All right, city administrator. Okay, let me, let me, let me give my comments first. I give my comments first.
Oh, sure.
Okay, because I sometimes I, and then um, during the meeting directly after its membership, I can say that if need be. Then I'll give my comments first. And and thank you for your leadership and 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 writing down because I have wrote mine, um, because at the same time, as much as I I make sure people feel heard and understood on every single level throughout this city of forty three thousand plus people, twelve and a half square miles, I also have some feelings and values and I also have some things that I would like to to address. Um, and so this is specifically, I'm talking to community and talking to my colleagues, business owners, nonprofits, landlords, volunteers on boards, um, elected to represent the city, appointed by peers to serve, uh, county staff, uh, any type of leadership, whether it's state, federal, that is elected and is to serve the city of Heggers Town. Um, your, our, our leadership absolutely matters and constantly, constantly, my leadership is questioned. And I'm okay with my leadership being questioned. Matter of fact, I like to be at the table and have my leadership questioned. I've done a lot of work. Done a lot of work within this city to be able to sit as a councilwoman, to be elected along with my family. And I just want to say at this point with just a few months left of this administration, also with as much divisiveness as we have in the nation, that I don't want to be a part of any type of political divisiveness. I'm not going to be a part of it. I'm not going to protect and try to cover and and do any type of person. If you're out of order, you're out of order. And I don't have a problem saying that. And so again, my leadership has been questioned, my parenting has been questioned, my finances been discussed all throughout this city and it's okay. It's okay because I sit here ready to do that and to serve in that capacity, but I'm not going to keep doing this. I'm, I just can't. There are more than just the city of Heggers Town that is elected to serve this community. I spent from seven thirty this morning to noon with police. Also, code enforcement came down. I, I mean, it is in disarray. And when I say disarray, I mean the way that we are maneuvering as as these folks, because I do conflict resolution. I am not experienced on anything. You won't see me step in anyone's other, any other lane. I'm not a business owner. I don't have a personal interest. There's nothing for me that that I, that I sit here and 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 attempt to, you know, uh, be in this position. I was appointed. I was appointed by my colleagues unanimously. And I want to share a couple of quotes. One of them is the one that's on our agenda today. Trust breeds trust. Mutual respect builds, mutual respect builds trust. Trust unlocks hidden potential. Trust is built with consistency. Also, humility in successful people is its own kind of arrogance. And that's Shirley Chisholm. And I just want to say that I just feel as though a lot of times that there's this whole thing that happens where it's not our fault, it's their fault, it's this person's fault, and I'm gonna tell you whose fault it is. It's our inability as an entire community to keep our mouths off of each other, to stay out of, the city is nonpartisan. I ran for Congress as a Democrat and I did not include this seat. I did not include the city. I was very careful. I was very intentional. You know why? Because when you guys appointed me, when you decided that I could sit here and represent and finish this term, it meant more to me that we win, that the city wins. I'm not in a bed with nobody. I have no personal connections. I don't even care too much about friends. What I do care about is the constituents, the people of Heggers Town. What I do care about is fairness. Another thing, it, leadership being questioned, fine. Staff, volunteers, elected officials, that's what we are here to do. That's what we're here to do. So in my closing comments, I just want to make that very clear. Yes, I am extremely, extremely hot. Extremely hot. You know why? Because I'm watching nonprofits blame each other. I watched the police department in chief and Ashley facilitate a conversation with the homeless coalition. Exactly how much money comes in on the home, on, on nonprofits. Absolutely. What else I would like to know once I'm out of this seat is who owns where the nonprofits are in in the buildings and how much money and help are you getting from the federal and state government that you're not doing your job? That you get to choose who you're gonna work with, that you get to pull back out of how you're gonna work with someone because those services are not all the way reaching the people. And I'm tired of it. I'm sick of it. I'm sick of the divisiveness. I'm sick of the arrogance. I'm sick of the, the, uh, the up here. I'm over it. I'm over it. There are working families that are hurt. There are businesses that that don't have the access nor the friends nor the political infrastructure around them to be able to survive another year. And we sit and we want to play games and political games and I'm not with it. I'm just not. I'm not for the next couple of months and I'm not once I'm out of this seat. I'm definitely not. And with that being said, I appreciate, I appreciate all the work the staff has done. I appreciate all the work that my colleagues have done within the city, but I'm also watching. And I'm watching nonprofits and I'm watching business owners and I'm watching them get what they can get off the backs of the people of Heggers Town. And whenever you hurt someone, whenever you let someone go because you don't like them or whenever you go talk about another elected official, you then make it so that people that work at parole and probation won't even call the damn police. You make it so that folks won't even reach out to particular entities because all of this is disarray. And so again, leadership matters. I don't mind my being questioned. Just make sure that everybody else doesn't mind there being questioned and I'll see you at the table. I'll never do it on public, um, in in my social media. I'll never do it there. I'll always look a person in the face and ask them to go ahead and clarify what they were saying. That's how much I care. And I don't, I'm not playing. It's, it's, it's too much at stake. I'm sick of it. I'm really sick of it. We say all of this, but then we need police protection, but then we do all of this and then we need to re, no, no. Let's do what we've been elected, appointed to do. Counsel, city administrator.
A lot of things going on this week. Um, just, uh, you can go to hagrestownmd.org and and check that out. But one thing I wanted, I I do want to take a minute to talk about trash. We are about two weeks in and I want to thank the vast majority of folks that are utilizing the totes that are uh, that are uh putting the trash out in the appropriate manner. I want to thank them. Um, and I also want to thank those that are calling in that are uh, working with with Jeannie Jeffries and Jeannie is a almost forty year employee here uh, who probably has the best customer service of any of us in this town. And um, she's taken, she's taken a lot of phone calls, a lot of, a lot of crap. And um, I appreciate those that are calling in and and working with her. If you need another tote, if if you're not sure about when your set out is, that kind of thing, that are working with her professionally. The one thing I don't uh appreciate are those that are calling in and just blasting her. Uh, and those, that is happening far too, far too often. If you have an issue with trash, call in, be professional, um, ask for another tote. If you're not sure, um, if you're not, if if you're refusing to use uh the totes that were given uh because you don't feel like you need to use the totes that you were given, uh, trash ain't gonna get picked up. And uh, like voluntary compliance, we're gonna, we're, we're coming up with uh a means to where uh we're gonna go out and we're just gonna ask you again, please start using the totes. Please put them out on the right day. Uh, please don't overfill them. Please don't put a plastic bag next to them. That's, that's all we're asking. If you can't do that, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna work with you, but we, we've got to pick the trash up. We can't let the trash sit. So we're gonna go out, use our staff time and go pick the trash up. Uh, we're not gonna do that for free forever. We're not gonna do that for free forever. And Will, Paul, Paul and Jim have been working on, on some steps to take so that we don't start out punitive. As you talked about a little bit earlier, you start, we start trying to get voluntary compliance, but if you don't voluntarily comply, then we're gonna get punitive. Sorry. That's the only thing, that's the only thing really we can do at that point. Because we, we cannot allow trash to be just the door open and trash thrown out on the sidewalk like we're finding in a lot of places. So once again, Jeannie Jeffries, if, if, if I could, if I had the ability to create saints in this town, Jeannie Jeffries would be on top of the list. And the crap that she puts up with from, from some folks that have, have a lot of non-communicative skills is she shouldn't have to do. And I just appreciate everything about her. Everything else you can look on the internet, you can look on the website, the Facebook page. We do a good job of, of telling people what's going on so they can, they can look there. Thank you.
Principal MacIntyre.
I want to take a moment to say I received, I think that most of us were copied on, some incidents that occurred with some instances around people's neighborhoods or businesses or whatever. And I just want to commend and include in my own area that HPD is as responsive as they can be. And we bring something to Captain Langston's attention and it's addressed and, and you know, I send it to Scott and it gets, you know, at least the response and that while it isn't anywhere near perfect. I know that I appreciate that response in, in my area and I believe that the people that we have heard from also appreciate that, that. So thank you, Chief, and thank you, Captain Langston, for at least trying to put that Band-Aid on these issues while we work really hard, just like the mayor said about like figuring out how it all makes better sense. So, and, and can be less ego and less siloed and less battling and all that kind of stuff. When I know and you know, and we all know that there are people out here working every day to try and resolve that. So my sincere appreciation for the efforts that are being made.
Since City Administrator, I just wanted to mention the trash issue. And I know that was mostly about protecting staff and I agree with that 100%. Nobody should be the brunt of the one person especially. And it's certainly not appropriate what you've described is happening. At the same time, I can't help but wonder if there's some kind of systemic issue challenge with the new program that, that we need to address. And I'll just leave that at that. On, on a brighter note, you know, as a recovering person that, that worked on building construction, the topping out ceremony at the Field House was specific, especially for me was an especially nice event. The, the project manager of, of, of the construction company talked about the history. It goes back hundreds, if not thousands of years of topping out and what it meant then and what it means now. A real milestone. And I know I wasn't around when, when most of you did the heavy lifting to get that project underway. But it's just enormously fulfilling to see the topping out, knowing that that's a major milestone in a construction project. And, you know, our next big milestone will be the day we cut the ribbon and the community gets, you know, begins to enjoy that facility, which is going to be just amazing. So thank you for that day, for all that put it, all the folks that staff and management company and contractor, everybody that put it together. It was, it was, it was, it was a good day. So thank you.
So I just want to go on like a small little tangent about this is, this is what true real government looks like. You're gonna have uncomfortable conversations, especially with those who live here, have businesses here, really care about the area and really care about their, their citizens. And you know, we, we come off like we take pictures and we're present, you know, we go to the events and ribbon cutting and all that stuff like that. That's, we do that, but we also sit at this table and also talk about increasing rates and increasing, you know, safety or talk about trash or getting all these complaints via emails. And that's the, that's what we really do for the $8,000 that we get a year, right? That we just brought about the whole pay situation. We do that because we care and we lead with our heart. So there's going to be times where we're going to not agree with one another, but we're always respectful, right? And we also still listen to the citizens that actually elected us to be in this position. It's not all pretty. It's not goods and glamour all the time. We may look like we, you know, we're doing, having a fun time, but sometimes, actually a lot of nights, we go to bed like we don't have the solutions and it hurts us. We cry together. We, you know, we talk to other elected officials like, what are you guys doing? We're having the same problems. Like what, what can y'all do to help us too? You know, so I just want to just, just have a little tangent that this is hard work. It is. And it's not easy when you can't make everybody happy, especially dress yourself like I'm a Pisces, so I, I want to make everybody's lives better, but that's just not the reality. Like I do my best to help one person a day, but the reality is I can't make the world a better place tomorrow. Especially in a four-term, four-year term. We just can't. So I, I, I commend my colleagues. I commend staff. The citizens that reached out to actually have some positive things to say instead of just like, hey, you're doing a horrible job. Like we, we know, we know some things we have to work on. We get that. We don't need you to tell us. We don't need you to tell, you know, we, we take time out of, away from our families, our friends, you know, hell, some of us only got cats and dogs. And we say, you know, we still do what we can to better this city and it's not always easy. So it may look like there's some confusion right at the table, but this is, this has to happen. Only way we get to a good place is if we talk about it and come to the table together to make things happen. So, thank you.
Councilmember Russia.
I mean, I think the bad news is, is from time to time, as should be expected of government, there's going to be conflict associated with different philosophical approaches to different issues. The good news is, I think that everybody up here is professional enough to like work through what those are and figure out a path forward that is agreeable to whatever the concerns are that are raised. And I think in this particular instance, this particular item reminds me of comments that the former city attorney, John Erner, would say from time to time, and he probably stole it from somebody else, is the best agreement is the table is the one that nobody walks away happy from. And so, you know, I kind of like look at that and go, okay, we brought up a lot of ideas this evening. We certainly have different philosophical opinions about what those ideas are. But we accept and recognize and hear from one another that, you know, here's an item we'd like to address together. And we will likely walk away from this table not being absolutely happy with everything, you know, in our own minds that we would want to, to gain from it, but something that, that's workable and doable. You know, and that we, that we figure out together, you know, is agreeable.
I don't have too much to add. I will say I appreciate Councilmember Burnett and Councilman Alshar. They're much more eloquent than I am. But to the same sentiment, you know, I go to bed almost every night with a pit in my stomach with things in this community that I want to help make better. And I'm sure everybody at this table does and I'm sure staff does. And I appreciate everybody up here and we're all doing our best. Yeah, you know, we're all imperfect. So we're all perfectly imperfect. So, thank you.
Thank you. Real quick before adjournment, Councilmember Perini, thank you for bringing up the Field House topping. That was amazing. So happy to be able to, be able to done that with so many folks. So many folks showed up for that, but there were two that were not there and I wanted to take this moment to, to thank them. And that's Rodney Tissue, who worked diligently with us at this table and then also with Eastern Sports Management and all that before he retired. And then also former mayor and council member Babrucci, who was at the table for a lot of the votes that happened for the Field House. And yeah, also real quick, I want to also say thank you to Enak Park Library in Baltimore. They had me there as a mayor facilitating and it was amazing. I'm going to send a letter of thank you to their trustees. They treated me and the city of Heggers Town with the utmost respect and love. They actually, you know, just, just shouted us out. It was an amazing conversation with an amazing artist. Arthur, as well as the publisher is now looking to bring different authors to our library as well as our museum or even any of our businesses. And so thank you Baltimore City for having me to facilitate. And with that, we're adjourned.